The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line.[112.71][112.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line.[114.51][114.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[115.41][115.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[116.31][116.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[117.21][117.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[118.11][118.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[119.01][119.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[119.91][119.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[120.81][120.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[121.71][121.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[122.61][122.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[123.51][123.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[124.41][124.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[125.31][125.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[126.21][126.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[127.11][127.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[128.01][128.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[128.91][128.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[129.81][129.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[130.71][130.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[131.61][131.63][S01. Please remain on the line.[132.51][132.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[133.41][133.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[134.31][134.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[135.21][135.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[136.11][136.13][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[137.01][137.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[137.91][137.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[138.81][138.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[139.71][139.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[140.61][140.63][S01. Please remain on the line.[141.51][141.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[142.41][142.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[143.31][143.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[144.21][144.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[145.11][145.13][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[146.01][146.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[146.91][146.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[147.81][147.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[148.71][148.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[149.61][149.63][S01. Please remain on the line.[150.51][150.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[151.41][151.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[152.31][152.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[153.21][153.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[154.11][154.13][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[155.01][155.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[155.91][155.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[156.81][156.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[157.71][157.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[158.61][158.63][S01. Please remain on the line.[159.51][159.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[160.41][160.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[161.31][161.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[162.21][162.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[163.11][163.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[164.01][164.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[164.91][164.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[165.81][165.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[166.71][166.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[167.61][167.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[168.51][168.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[169.41][169.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[170.31][170.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[171.21][171.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[172.11][172.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[173.01][173.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[173.91][173.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[174.81][174.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[175.71][175.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[176.61][176.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[177.51][177.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[178.41][178.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[179.31][179.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[180.21][180.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[181.11][181.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[182.01][182.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[182.91][182.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[183.81][183.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[184.71][184.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[185.61][185.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[186.51][186.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[187.41][187.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[188.31][188.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[189.21][189.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[190.11][190.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[191.01][191.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[191.91][191.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[192.81][192.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[193.71][193.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[194.61][194.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[195.51][195.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[196.41][196.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[197.31][197.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[198.21][198.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[199.11][199.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[200.01][200.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[200.91][200.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[201.81][201.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[202.71][202.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[203.61][203.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[204.51][204.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[205.41][205.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[206.31][206.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[207.21][207.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[208.11][208.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[209.01][209.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[209.91][209.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[210.81][210.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[211.71][211.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[212.61][212.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[213.51][213.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[214.41][214.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[215.31][215.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[216.21][216.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[217.11][217.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[218.01][218.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[218.91][218.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[219.81][219.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[220.71][220.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[221.61][221.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[222.51][222.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[223.41][223.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[224.31][224.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[225.21][225.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[226.11][226.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[227.01][227.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[227.91][227.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[228.81][228.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[229.71][229.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[230.61][230.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[231.51][231.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[232.41][232.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[233.31][233.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[234.21][234.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[235.11][235.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[236.01][236.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[236.91][236.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[237.81][237.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[238.71][238.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[239.61][239.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[240.51][240.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[241.41][241.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[242.31][242.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[243.21][243.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[244.11][244.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[245.01][245.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[245.91][245.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[246.81][246.84][S01. Please remain on the line.[247.71][247.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[248.61][248.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[249.51][249.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[250.41][250.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[251.31][251.34][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[252.21][252.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[253.11][253.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[254.01][254.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[254.91][254.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[255.81][255.83][S01. Please remain on the line.[256.71][256.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[257.61][257.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[258.51][258.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[259.41][259.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[260.31][260.33][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[261.21][261.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[262.11][262.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[263.01][263.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[263.91][263.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[264.81][264.83][S01. Please remain on the line.[265.71][265.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[266.61][266.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[267.51][267.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[268.41][268.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[269.31][269.33][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[270.21][270.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[271.11][271.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[272.01][272.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[272.91][272.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[273.81][273.83][S01. Please remain on the line.[274.71][274.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[275.61][275.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[276.51][276.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[277.41][277.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[278.31][278.33][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[279.21][279.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[280.11][280.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[281.01][281.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[281.91][281.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[282.81][282.83][S01. Please remain on the line.[283.71][283.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[284.61][284.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[285.51][285.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[286.41][286.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[287.31][287.33][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[288.21][288.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[289.11][289.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[290.01][290.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[290.91][290.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[291.81][291.83][S01. Please remain on the line.[292.71][292.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[293.61][293.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[294.51][294.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[295.41][295.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[296.31][296.33][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[297.21][297.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[298.11][298.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[299.01][299.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[300.01][300.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[300.91][300.94][S01. Please remain on the line.[301.81][301.83][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[302.71][302.74][S01. Please remain on the line.[303.61][303.64][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[304.51][304.54][S01. Please remain on the line.[305.41][305.44][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[306.31][306.33][S01. Please remain on the line.[307.21][307.24][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[308.11][308.14][S01. Please remain on the line.[309.01][309.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[310.01][310.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[310.91][310.94][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[311.81][311.83][S01. Please remain on the line.[312.71][312.74][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[313.61][313.64][S01. Please remain on the line.[314.51][314.54][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[315.41][315.44][S01. Please remain on the line.[316.31][316.33][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[317.21][317.24][S01. Please remain on the line.[318.11][318.14][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[319.01][319.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[320.01][320.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[321.01][321.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[322.01][322.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[323.01][323.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[324.01][324.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[325.01][325.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[326.01][326.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[327.01][327.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[328.01][328.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[329.01][329.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[330.01][330.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[331.01][331.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[332.01][332.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[333.01][333.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[334.01][334.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[335.01][335.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[336.01][336.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[337.01][337.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[338.01][338.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[339.01][339.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[340.01][340.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[341.01][341.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[342.01][342.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[343.01][343.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[344.01][344.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[345.01][345.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[346.01][346.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[347.01][347.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[348.01][348.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[349.01][349.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[350.01][350.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[351.01][351.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[352.01][352.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[353.01][353.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[354.01][354.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[355.01][355.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[356.01][356.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[357.01][357.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[358.01][358.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[359.01][359.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[360.01][360.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[361.01][361.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[362.01][362.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[363.01][363.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[364.01][364.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[365.01][365.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[366.01][366.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[367.01][367.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[368.01][368.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[369.01][369.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[370.01][370.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[371.01][371.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[372.01][372.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[373.01][373.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[374.01][374.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[375.01][375.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[376.01][376.04][S01. The webinar will begin shortly.[377.01][377.04][S01. Please remain on the line.[378.01][378.04][S01. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Westminster City Council Study Session for October the 5th. Starting out tonight, we have our typical reports. We have three items to deal with tonight from the business standpoint and continuation of an executive session that started last week. I'm going to leave the report that I have till we get to the COVID piece because most of it is around our COVID numbers. So I'll open it up at this point. If there's any member of the council has any reports they'd like to provide.
Mr. Democ.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let the council know if you didn't see the report that the inclusivity board hosted their retreat this weekend or their team building and worked on their mission. I did not join them as I felt that it would be better for them to just be able to do their teamwork and work on their mission together. But I did hear back that they had a productive weekend, both from staff liaise on Jason Gank as well as their chairman, Justin Davis. And they said that it was a good productive weekend. So I'm excited to hear what they came up with on their Saturday. I wanted to take a quick moment to take pause and remember something that happened eight years ago. So if you didn't know, eight years ago today is when Jessica Ridgeway was abducted. So that was a very hard time in my community. And this day is always a hard time on dear friends of mine as well as our community. But I wanted to take a minute to recognize the first responders and the city staff who worked so hard when that situation hit our community. I got to meet so many different people firsthand who really worked hard to both figure out what happened to Jessica as well as bring justice to her. So I wanted to take notice of that and so that we all can remember that Jessica because I think her legacy lives through her memory, as well as ask you to keep the Ridgeway families in your thoughts and prayers because I know this is always a hard season for them.
Councilor Democ, would you or either Councilor Seymour talk about what you did on Saturday here at City Hall?
Sure. Also on Saturday was the shred-a-thon with the PD and Crime Stoppers. And so that's an annual event that you're able to bring some of your shredding to City Hall. And the citizens alumni or academy alumni group helps the PD. And we take your shredding. And this year it was with Iron Mountain. And they'll shred your sensitive documents for you. I know the mayor joined us for a little bit as well. The totals weren't as big as they were in prior years because of COVID. We weren't sure when we were going to do the event. Typically, it's actually held in May. But this year it was pushed out. And so I guess Northland had done an event. And at that point, we weren't sure if we were going to do ours. So that's my way of making an excuse why we came in third because we usually do much better as far as how many cars come through City Hall at Westminster. But still a good event. And I appreciate all the volunteers who came out and helped and the different officers who came and volunteered at the event as well.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So last week, the JEDC Board held a retreat where they went through their strategic plan and their goals for the upcoming year and some strategies, had a long conversation about business in Jefferson County and how there is a need for more affordable housing to complement the needed work in the community. So I thought that was a very productive conversation. And then also, last Wednesday night, we had a meeting. The PRLOS, the Parks Recreation Library Open Space Committee had a meeting on the budget. And we had a two-hour conversation about some of the proposals that came from the Parks and Recs Department for the budget in conversation with services and things that they would like to be able to do and things that they won't be able to do due to the cutbacks. So that was a very productive conversation. It was good to hear. We had residents and we had members of the board as well as all of our Parks and Recs staff. And it was a very refreshing and good conversation on the budget. And then on Saturday, I held a coffee in the park, Ryan Elementary Park, and really enjoyed having a conversation with my neighbors who came out to have a cup of coffee with me and a nice conversation about what's going on in the city. So thank you to those of you who came out and joined me. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Sikes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I met with Colorado Communities for Climate Action on Friday as part of their steering committee. They first had a legislative update with their brand-new legislative chair, which is Chris Menjess from Aspen. And then our lobbyist, Eliza Schultz and Elizabeth Rosen were on the call as well. I found out that they are considering running a bill this year. The bill would be a climate disaster mitigation fund to help support local governments if there was forest fire, flood, any climate-related disaster. The criteria they used was, is it aligned with our policy statements that everybody's already agreed to? Is it relevant? Is it likely to pass? And is it a good fit? And another variable is, is someone else already running it? Do we need to take up the capacity? And so this was a good fit. They think it'll raise $5 million a year. So just a drop in the bucket to really deal with some of those natural disasters. They also went over last year's legislative session. We've all gotten quite a few briefings on that. But it was a reminder how grim those budget cuts were. And then they looked into this coming 2021 session. So right now, the session's scheduled for January 13th. It's uncertain if it's going to be in-person, remote, or a hybrid. They feel at this point it's most likely that the Democrats will keep control. There were a list of potential legislation that would be appropriate for CC4CA to follow, specifically that bill that we may run, commercial energy, benchmarking, beneficial electrification. So that is something that really makes sense for local governments to pay attention to. I did notice, I believe, one of our state representatives is doing a town hall on this issue tomorrow. But that's really pushing electrification and building codes, community choice, solid waste, plastic, transportation, and fee funding. But those would not be bills that we would be the primary driver on. So that was the main information that I took away from that. So it sounds like even with the uncertainty, it's probably going to be a pretty busy year this year. Other than that, I did get to speak to the Girl Scouts, which was absolutely delightful, about jobs in local government and how local government works. So a lot of wonderful future leaders out there. That was an absolute delight. And I did have a meeting with the Colorado Municipal League just training me on how to run the policy committee as the chair since it's going to be virtual. They'll have a few more hiccups. So Councilor Democ will be able to let you know if I do an okay job or if I stumble.
Councilor Vols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Environmental Advisory Board met last Wednesday. And the purpose of the meeting was to review and take a look at the new and recently finished, completed draft of our sustainability plan. So this is really exciting. This will be the first time our city's had a sustainability plan. So the members had a chance to ask questions, make comments, and they did review it ahead of time. So the next steps in that will be heading to the Planning Commission for our presentation, inclusivity board, and the Parks Recreation Libraries Board. So Paul Schmick and our Sustainability Officer will be taking that on the road to share with all of our boards and commissions. And it will be back to City Council for our review, our final review, on November 16th. That's the plan at least. So we're moving forward. And when I say sustainability, just for folks that are maybe listening at home, it's not just environmental sustainability. Sustainability, a whole series of important aspects and core services within our city, our infrastructure, our neighborhoods, our economy, in addition to environmental sustainability. So it's a really big and exciting new plan for our city. And the Environmental Advisory Board was very excited and were very positive about the plan and had a lot of good comments. So it'll be coming to boards and commissions that you all serve on soon. And then we will have it again on November 16th. So that's my report. Thank you.
Councilor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a calendar note. Tomorrow, we celebrate the delayed National Night Out. It's a little bit abbreviated this year. It will be in three sponsored locations. At Faversham Park, at 72nd and Ingalls, just north of 72nd on Ingalls. City Center Park, across the street from City Hall on 92nd. And then Amherst Park, which is at 130th. That doesn't go through, but you have to get there from 134th and go south, just adjacent to Rappo Ridge Elementary School. So hope to see many, many of our residents out there. Unfortunately, with it getting dark early, it won't last long. And people will be able to spread out in our amazing... So look forward to seeing that tomorrow.
Yeah, the comments from Council? Councilor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This weekend, I enjoyed, and hopefully other residents did too, the mini-fall festival down in historic Westminster. Lots of great crafty vendors, good food from Cindy's Food Truck. And I also want to give a calendar update for upcoming water discussion that comes up. Our first session comes up on Thursday at 6:00. So be sure to tune into that. Although it's not participatory, I would invite our residents to listen in and definitely email for thoughts on what we discussed in these meetings. So thank you for the update.
All right, any other comments from Council? Mayor Protem Sikes, go ahead.
My apologies. Dean Counselor Smith just jogged my memory that both Counselor Smith and I were on the RTD Local Elected's briefing call. I believe that was on Wednesday, if I'm correct. It was a great call, just kind of giving us an overview. RTD is struck with some really difficult budget cuts. And Counselor Smith, please feel free to chime in and correct me if I misstate anything, but I believe they were looking at almost a 17% staff reduction level. They have some pretty extreme impacts to their organization. In addition, they're looking at pay cuts. It's on a sliding scale depending on how much you make, what percentage your pay would go down. So it's a pretty dire situation. They also talked about the types of services that were going to be cut and what is going to be supported. And so a lot of the commuter routes, including rail, are much more vulnerable. One good news for Westminster, I believe it's the 31... And Counselor Smith, I'm sure you're better at this than I am. That has very high ridership. It has not diminished even during COVID. And so they have buses that trail oftentimes to be able because of the spacing requirements and the low density on the buses. And our corridor is looking good and is being recommended to continue that while others are not going to have that service. Then they talked about the new executive director's start date. She will be here soon. And is there anything overt that I'm missing, Counselor Smith?
Yes, so they will be going into their public meetings for schedule changes in January. So be sure to also participate in that because we do want, RTD does want to hear your feedback on that. I know that Mayor Protem, you asked about beeline in the schedules to that. And that should not be impacted.
That bill that we may run, um, commercial energy, um, benchmarking, um, beneficial electrification. So that is something that really makes sense for local governments to pay attention to. I did notice, um, I believe, um, one of our state representatives is doing a town hall on this issue tomorrow, but, um, that's really pushing electrification and building codes, um, community choice, solid waste, plastic transportation and fee funding, but those would not be bills that we would be the primary driver on. So that was the main information that I took away from that. So it sounds like even with the, um, uncertainty, it's probably going to be a pretty busy year this year. Other than that, I did get to speak to the Girl Scouts, which was absolutely delightful about jobs in local government and how local government works. So a lot of wonderful future leaders out there. That was an absolute delight. And, um, I did have a meeting with, um, the Colorado Municipal League, um, just training me on how to run the policy committee, um, as the chair, um, since it's going to be virtual. They'll have a few more hiccups. So Councillor Demont will be able to let you know if I do an okay job or if I stumble, so.
Councillor Vols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Environmental Advisory Board met last Wednesday and the purpose of the meeting was to review and take a look at the new and recently finished, completed, um, draft of our, um, sustainability plan. So this is really exciting. This will be the first time our city's had a sustainability plan. So the members had a chance to ask questions, make comments, and they did review it ahead of time. So the next steps in that will be, um, heading into the Planning Commission for our presentation, Inclusivity Board and the Parks Recreation and Libraries Board. So Paul Schmick and our Sustainability Officer will be taking that on the road to share with all of our Boards and Commissions. And it will be back to City Council for our review, our final review on November 16th. That's the plan at least. So, um, we're moving forward. And when I say sustainability, just for folks that are maybe listening at home, it's not just environmental sustainability, sustainability and a whole series of important, um, aspects and core services within our city, our infrastructure, our neighborhoods, our economy, in addition to environmental sustainability. So it's a really big and exciting new, uh, plan for our city. And the, the Environmental Advisor Board was very excited and, um, were very positive about the plan and, um, had a lot of good comments. So it'll be coming to Boards and Commissions, uh, that you all serve on soon. And then we will have it again on November 16th. So that's my report. Thank you.
Councillor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a, uh, calendar note, tomorrow, we celebrate the, uh, delayed National Night Out. It's a little bit abbreviated this year. It will be in three, uh, sponsored locations, uh, at Faversham Park, at Seventy Second and Ingalls, just north of Seventy Second on Ingalls, uh, City Center Park, uh, across the street from City Hall on Ninety Second, and then Amherst Park, which is, uh, Taconson and One Hundred and Thirty. That doesn't go through, but you have to get there from One Hundred and Thirty Fourth and go south, just adjacent to Rappo Ridge Elementary School. So hope to see many, many of our residents out there. Unfortunately, with it, with it getting dark early, it won't, it won't last long and people will be able to spread out in our amazing, so look forward to seeing that tomorrow.
Yeah, the comments from council? Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this weekend I enjoyed, uh, and hopefully other residents did too, um, the mini fall festival down in historic Westminster, um, lots of, uh, good, great, then crafty vendors, um, good food from, uh, Cindy's Food Truck. And, uh, I also want to give a calendar update for, um, upcoming water discussion that comes up. Our first session comes up on Thursday, um, at six o'clock. So be sure to tune into that. Um, although it's not a participatory, um, I would invite our residents to, uh, listen in and, uh, definitely email your thoughts, uh, on what we discussed in these meetings. So, uh, thank you for the update.
All right, any other comments from council? Mayor Protem Sikes, go ahead.
My apologies, Dean Councillor Smith just jogged my memory that both Councillor Smith and I were on the RTD Local Elected's briefing call. Um, I believe that was on Wednesday, if I'm correct. Um, it was a great call, just kind of giving us an overview. RTD is struck with some really difficult budget cuts. Um, and, and Councillor Smith, please feel free to chime in and correct me if I misstate anything, but I believe they were looking at almost a seventeen percent, um, staff reduction level. Um, there, they have some pretty extreme, um, impacts to their organization. Um, in addition, um, they're looking at pay cuts. It, it, it's on a sliding scale depending on how much you make, what percentage your pay would go down. Um, so it, it's, it's a pretty dire situation. They also talked about the types of, um, services that were going to be cut and what is going to be, um, supported. And so a lot of the commuter routes, um, including rail, um, are, are much more vulnerable. Um, one good news for Westminster, I believe it's the thirty-one, um, and Councillor Smith, I'm sure you're better at this than I am, um, I, that is, uh, has very high ridership. It has not diminished even during COVID. And so, um, they have, uh, kind of buses that trail, um, oftentimes to be able, because of the spacing requirements and the low density on the buses. And, um, our corridor is, is looking good and is being recommended to continue that, um, while others are not going to have that service. Um, then they talked about the new, um, Executive Director's start date. Um, she will be here soon. And is there anything, um, overt that I'm missing, Councillor Smith?
Uh, yes, so they will be going into their public meetings for schedule changes in January. Um, so be sure to also, uh, participate in that, um, because we do want, RTD does want to hear your feedback, um, on that. Uh, I know that, uh, Mayor Protem, you asked about beeline in the schedules to that. Um, and that should not be impacted. It should be slight schedule adjustments, um, as well as the flatter and flyer. So, um, but that's, that's all things that are relative for residents to weigh in on their thoughts as far as, uh, what routes they would like to continue to see and timetables. And, um, so be sure to participate in that. It is on the website. Uh, the first meeting starts Wednesday, um, and it goes Wednesday, Thursday and Saturday. Um, and the times are on the website. So thank you, Mayor Protem.
Yep, thank you. Tag team.
Any other comments, council? Mr. Tripp, you have the City Manager's Report?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, when you think about nineteen eighty and the size of the city at that point, geographically and the amount of population, and you consider that most of the infrastructure that all of us enjoy today, from the streets to the utilities, um, to all the, all of the, all the buildings that serve, um, our public safety people, our, um, municipal courthouse, our city hall, uh, all of those things have, were built during that time. Um, you, you have to ask yourself, so who did that work? Who was, who was involved in that work? Oh, we have an employee that celebrated the end of a forty-year career. And with his, uh, comment today, um, another forty to go. He's a transplant from Texas. He's been our city engineer, but most recently he's the Director of Community Development. I'm proud to have had an opportunity to appoint him into that position as a department head. And I'm proud to, to know Dave as a, as a true professional, um, and as a friend. Dave Downing celebrated forty years at the end of last week. Congratulations, Dave. And, uh, we, we respect and appreciate you very much. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp, but thank you, council. I love it here. Looking forward to a few more years.
Thanks, Dave. That's really good. Ms. Parker, let's move on to item number one. I believe this one is yours.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, so we are going to be leading a discussion for you regarding appointing an administrative protest hearing officer. Um, this evening I'm going to be joined by both our Assistant City Attorney Matt Munch and of course Dave Frankel is here as well, if there are any questions for him. Um, and I'd also like to introduce Karen Goldman, um, who we are recommending, uh, should council give us the direction to appoint as our protest hearing officer. Um, Karen is very well known here throughout Colorado and has a great deal of experience, um, serving as a protest hearing officer. So to just kind of kick us off, um, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Munch and let him give you a very quick, brief overview. And then of course, all of us are available here for any questions or discussion that you might have.
Mr. Munch.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, hopefully everybody can hear me. This is, uh, Assistant City Attorney Matthew Munch. I imagine everybody has had a chance to look at the agenda memo at this point. There's not a lot to add to that. Just to briefly recap, as I'm sure, uh, everybody on City Council is aware, uh, there are a number of petitions for recall that have been, uh, that are being circulated right now. They have been submitted to the city clerk's office and have been approved as the form. Templates for petitions have been, uh, given to, asked for them. And we expect that those are being circulated right. We do not yet know, uh, whether those petitions are going to, uh, gather enough signatures to, um, demand a recall election, nor do we really know whether they're actually going to be turned back in to the city clerk's office within the required timeframe. However, assuming that they're, that they will be, uh, that starts the clock on a number of procedures, uh, not least of which is, of course, the city clerk's office is going to have to determine the sufficiency of the petition. But also there is a provision in Colorado Revised Statute, specifically Section Thirty-One Four Five-O-Three, Three-B, which allows, uh, any registered elector who resides in the city to also challenge the sufficient of the petition to, uh, file protest. And if such a challenge is made, there's a fairly tight timeline for hearing to occur for either the municipal clerk or a different hearing officer designated by the governing body, of course, in this case, the City Council. The reason that we thought it might be a good idea to designate a hearing officer, um, prior to this, instead of scrambling to find one after a petition is submitted to the clerk's office is essential. First being, we expect with everything going on and the larger election and any number of other factors, that the, the city clerk's office will be, um, stressed very much to the limit during the timeframe we might expect to receive these petitions and they might have to be reviewed. So it would be, uh, rather difficult for, uh, the city clerk's office to hold a hearing within the required amount of time. While the second reason is that while we don't see any reason why there would be any sort of conflict and interest in bias in the city clerk's office, it is always good to avoid even the appearance of any sort of bias. And by designating a external third-party hearing officer, um, we are avoiding even any sort of implication that the city clerk's office might be biased one way or another and, and provide a little bit more security or a little more assurance to the public that the petition is going to be evaluated in a neutral manner. Like I said, the, the, the reason we're asking for this, even though, as I said, we don't really know whether the petitions are even going to be turned in, let alone whether they're going to be sufficient, at the timeline, it's quite narrow. Once the, the protest is filed, it's a very limited amount of time to get the hearing done. So we think it's much better to have a hearing officer designated and ready to go, rather than coming back to you on short notice and scrambling and trying to find a qualified person later on. And, um, that is all I have to say, unless anybody has any questions for me.
All right, let me turn to council. Does any member of the council has any questions on what, uh, has been presented by the city clerk? And Mr. Munch, let me make sure. Councillor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm just trying to think through this because I'm, I'm not certain I'm in favor. You know, run through a couple of reasons why and see what feedback it is. I mean, uh, the idea that there could be some worry of, of bias in the city clerk's office, if we have that, we have, I feel like a bigger problem because, I mean, is the city clerk's office still, um, is the one that ultimately oversees our council, um, elections? And I've not heard that be a problem in the past. Um, so I'm not sure why we would have a concern about that. Um, and, you know, with that being said, the other thing that I'm curious about, my understanding of things in the past that have had to be done, where, where there's something run, like a ballot measure that was citizen-led in the city, was that the city clerk's office was able to, um, basically appoint other, um, people who worked for the city? And so I'm just curious if that is an option and if that is an option, you know, would that keep us from having to spend some money? And, and why? And I, I believe that maybe that was done before, uh, and the example I heard was the Walmart, um, petition when the residents got that put on the ballot. So I'm just trying to understand, you know, through those two parts of it, especially being that the budget's really tight and, you know, seventy-five hundred, I think it was seventy-five hundred dollars I saw in the, the memo that this was going to cost. So trying to understand that. And then also, is there a cap on that seventy-five hundred? So I'll let you give me feedback.
Uh, sir, this is Matthew Munch again. I believe I can, uh, address the first two issues. Uh, I, I'm glad you raised it because I, I, I'm, I want to be clear. We have no reason to believe at this point that there is any, any bias or any impropriety or any conflict of interest. It's really a matter of we get the, sort of the ancillary, almost accidental benefit of avoiding the appearance of that. Because if anybody was to claim that or, or accuse that, which again, we don't have any reason to believe is there, um, it's just not a worry because we happen to have a third-party ex-hearing officer. So I apologize if, if I made it sound like there was any sort of concern about that. I'm not aware of anything that would give us such a concern. With regards to, uh, similar things that in the past we've had internal people doing, I believe what you're probably talking about is times when the city clerk's office has had employees help verify signatures and things of that nature. With the hearing officer, what we're talking about is for a very limited purpose. It's not for gauging the sufficiency of the petition in the first place. It's if the sufficiency of the petition is challenged, um, by an elector. It's if someone comes in from the outside and files a protest at the city, um, as a private citizen challenging the sufficiency of the petition, then and only then it would go to a hearing and the Colorado Revised Statutes requires that that be done by either the city clerk or a, a person designated by the city council. So the city clerk would not be empowered to designate anybody. It has to be by the city council if it's going to be anyone other than the city clerk herself.
With, with that said, real quick before you get, get into that, because I think I don't, I want to make sure that, um, my thought process is understood. Because I understand that, that, you know, there's a couple facets of the workload that you're thinking. And so part of the, of what I understood of what you explained in reading the memo is that the city clerk would anticipate being busy, um, with normal tasks as well as, um, verifying the signatures. I mean, because the, you know, with, I understand that with there being four petitions out in, you know, thousands of signatures per petition, that each of those would have to be verified. But couldn't that work be offset? So then we're not worried about the city clerk, um, being tied up in case that she had to, um, do the work that you would, you know, that this person would do if we approve it?
Right, so I'm going to go ahead and jump in here. We do anticipate, um, and in fact have already released a job description, um, to recruit people to assist us with this process, assuming that we will be, um, receiving four petitions of a sufficient number for us to, to verify. That being said, that is going to be north of twenty-three thousand signatures to verify over a fifteen-day period, including the weekends. So, um, just based on our, uh, research so far, and of course, we've verified petitions every two years that we have a councillor mayoral election. Um, so we have quite a bit of experience in terms of how long it takes to do each individual signature, um, as well as the potential, um, other steps that you need to ensure that you're exhausting all potential search methods and validating, um, signatures that were intended to be, um, on these petitions, right? That's the voter's intent, and so that's what we're going to do. Um, I will say this, the deadline for these to be turned in is November second. That is the day before a major election. The city clerk's office, um, overlapping with that timeline will already be very busy, assisting voters, helping to redirect them. That is just an incredibly busy day for us in terms of phone traffic, usually foot traffic. Um, and then of course, the traffic that is going to be all over our city facilities where we have drop boxes. However, that being said, um, even with, uh, temps being hired for this very specific task, the city clerk's office staff is going to be very involved with it. Obviously, we can't shut down our operations. We have many other duties, including packet, um, core requests, et cetera. So those will not be shut down in that fifteen-day period. We will continue to do all of our, um, all of our duties as well as verifying signatures. Also want to clarify that in the memo, the expenditure states not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars. That would be very unlikely. Um, and if, uh, Ms. Goldman has anything that she wants to add, that would anticipate lots and lots of time, uh, on her part. Uh, Ms. Goldman only charges per hour for actual time spent in a protest hearing as well as actual time spent producing a final report or a final judgment, if you will. The likelihood that it would take her multiple weeks to do that is unlikely, but that threshold, um, is essentially my spending threshold without getting further, um, permission up the chain. So do we anticipate it will be seventy-five hundred? We do not. Uh, Karen, do you have anything you wanted to add to that? You're on mute.
All right, I think I'm ready now. Okay, thank you for the opportunity. Um, I, I, I want to let you know that I just finished a, um, an administrative hearing for the city of Loveland. The hearing itself was ten hours worth of hearing. Uh, I just completed my findings in first format. That took an additional like eight hours. And, um, the, the total cost to them is nowhere near the seventy-five hundred dollars. So I don't anticipate even coming close, uh, to that, even with the opportunity or the, uh, ability to work on more than one of the recall petitions. If, if I may, I'd like to weigh in on the question about bias or the concern about the clerk's office. During serving, in the city clerk serving as a hearing officer, I train municipal clerks in a lot of areas related to elections, including the subject of recall. And I always recommend that if they get recall petitions filed and there are protests to the recall petitions, and oftentimes the protests are filed by the persons against whom the recall is being mounted, I always recommend that the clerk finds somebody to handle the administrative hearing, not just to alleviate any perception of bias or prejudice, but because they're working, possibly it might be construed that they are working against their bosses, their elected officials, and that really does put the city clerk in a very untenable position. Additionally, if the city clerk finds the petitions to be sufficient and there is a protest against the sufficiency or vice versa, if the city clerk finds the petition to be insufficient and there's a protest against that, the city clerk is hearing office, officer is going to be forced to rule on the decision that she and her staff have already made. And to me, that seems like it's a very difficult position to put the city clerk in.
That makes a lot of sense. I appreciate that, that feedback. I understand where you're going. I still am trying to think, think through this. So I guess the other thing that I was thinking, you're typically voting on some members of a body who are voting on something that directly affects a position that they, they hold as an elected. I know that there's been a question about that in the past. The most thing that jumps out to me is, um, a change in, in how we select the mayor some years back. And so that's the other thing that I just have in mind and it doesn't, you know, I'm not saying that's necessarily weighing, but as I think through that and you say that we wouldn't reach that limit with the seventy-five hundred, um, Ms. Parker, if you did for some crazy reason hit that seventy-five hundred dollar limit, or, I mean, I guess the question is, is that enough that you're certain you're not going to hit it? Because the other thing that I'm thinking is, if you hit that limit, then you'd have to come back to a group of people that had recall petitions, you know, being challenged and would we want to get into that position? So if we think this is a good thing, I would think we would want to make sure that that limit is high enough that you're not going to have to come back to the council and ask for it to be raised, I guess is what I'm thinking.
Right, so that's a very good question. Um, I guess the way I would answer that is, we're not sure of, of anything at this point in the process. Right now, we're within a sixty-day window in which petitions are being circulated, um, by a group who received approval as to form of those petitions. That's really all we know right now. Um, we don't know when the petitions might be dropped off. We know what the deadline is potentially, um, for them to get them in. Um, but we don't know if a protest will even be leveled against any part of this process or not. Um, in terms of do I think seventy-five hundred is enough? Truly, at this time, I absolutely do. Um, and, and I would defer to Karen if she wants to maybe give you a, a better idea of how those protest hearings play out, how they're scheduled, um, the, maybe an amount of time that it, it would take. The other thing, um, Councillor Demont, is we are asking for direction as far as appointing a third party. So we would bring that back as a resolution next week, um, for your consideration and for you to vote on. If we exceeded that amount, um, the only reason I would need to come back to council for further approval, I believe, and, and, uh, City Manager Tripp, if you wouldn't mind jumping in if I misspeak, I believe is if we exceed his spending authority on this item. The direction for you, uh, that we're asking for, rather, from you, is whether you agree that it would be in the city's best interest to appoint a third-party hearing officer. And City Manager Tripp, if I misspoke, would you please correct me?
That sounds correct, Michelle.
Okay, thank you.
And I would agree, Mr. Demont. I understand your, uh, question about funding, but this goes nowhere near the authorized limit to city manager. And that would come up through the city's chain. They would not have to come back to us.
No, that, that makes sense as soon as she, she pointed out that it wouldn't be her limit at that point. It would be the city managers. Um, initially, uh, you know, I was skeptical of this, but I think that, um, what you guys have shared makes, makes sense to be ahead of this instead of wait to see if there's petitions filed and then have, have to, you know, not have resources. So, um, I appreciate all the information and the feedback and the work put into doing this and, and trying to be proactive. You know, and so really I just wanted to really understand the situation and I think you've given me a really good view of, of what you're proposing. So thank you very much.
Mayor Protem Sikes.
Uh, my questions mainly got answered through Councillor Demont's line of questioning, but I did have, um, cup, two follow-ups. First and foremost, um, Clerk Parker just mentioned this, but I want to make sure my understanding's correct. But this is only if, um, they, those that are currently seeking the recall were able to get their petition signed, um, and, and submitted them. In the event that that does not happen, or in the event that nobody chooses to protest them, would there be no fee or would there just be a minimal fee? How would that work?
That's correct. Um, Ms. Goldman has, um, engaged with us with the understanding that we would only be charged for her time during a protest hearing and for her time in preparing a final report. So if none of these things come to pass, there is no minimum fee. Um, and Ms. Goldman, believe me, gives much of her time to the clerk community in terms of assistance and, um, and instruction, really, uh, in the form of training. So there would be no cost, to answer your question.
Well, I appreciate the, um, the staff report that we received. I appreciate the analysis and I think Ms. Goldman did a great job explaining why this is beneficial, um, to both council, the organization and the community if, if, if those things come to pass. Um, I did have, I, I just wanted to say, I don't have questions right now, but if I do have questions, would I be able to reach out through either, um, City Attorney Frankel, Michelle Parker, or through Don Tripp, um, to get specific questions answered? And who would be the appropriate person to field those questions to?
And you absolutely can send any of your questions to any of those people that you just, uh, mentioned. We're in, we'll be in contact with Ms. Goldman if it's something specific to a protest hearing that we would, um... that we would prefer for her to answer with her subject matter expertise. We can certainly do that and bridge that gap very easily.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Volz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make more of a comment than a question possibly. Well, let me ask this first. Is it more a question of timing for Parker? Or, you know, the amount of time you're putting in, is it more about being unbiased and that that whole line of reasoning?
Right. So first of all, there isn't a concern necessarily of bias. What, as Ms. Goldman mentioned, however, if there is a protest hearing in which I am the administrative protest hearing officer, I will essentially be ruling on something I've already ruled, which is to say either sufficiency or insufficiency. If there is some kind of protest as to what I ruled, that would be putting me as the judge of my own decision, essentially. For that reason, we just think it's a good practice and recommend that we would appoint a third party who would come in, look at the facts. Ms. Goldman would have the ability to call witnesses, compel people to testify, gather facts and run a hearing as a complete third party who didn't have any participation in the process whatsoever, which bluntly, the bulk of it on our side is this signature verification. And so that is essentially the reasoning. I don't have any bias towards whether or not a petition is deemed sufficient or insufficient. However, it is a precarious position to be in to make a ruling on essentially a decision that you yourself made.
That's a really good point. Thank you for restating that because I know you had stated that earlier. So thank you. Thank you for that. I think it is important. I appreciate the staff memo and I think it's important we have as fair as, from every perception, a very fair process here. So I I will support this, but I got to admit, I'm not happy about it at all, obviously. This is an expenditure of over $7,000 more possibly. And we know we'll see in our budget report later tonight, a special election like this, less than a year before an election, already scheduled election is going to be $200,000 estimated. That's a lot of money in really tough times and a really tough budget. I will support this, but I have to admit, I don't like it at all that we're doing a special election less than a year before an already scheduled election. So I just had to get that off my chest. Thank you very much. I will support this because I want it to be as favorable process as possible. Thank you.
Are there other comments by any member of council? All right, seeing no other comments, is there any member of council who does not support bringing this forward for a formal vote for next week? Ms. Parker, I see no objections. Please bring the memo for for us for next week.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, Ms. Goldman, for joining us this evening.
Thanks, guys. All right, let's move on to our COVID-19 response. Mr. Trip, we'll turn it over to you for the first part.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'll just kick this off. We have case data update from Max Kirschbaum and he'll begin. He'll be followed by City Attorney Frankel to give you your monthly emergency declaration review and to bring a very specific issue related to that emergency declaration to you. And then a facility reopening, what I believe will be handled by Deputy Opie. And I'll just listen with the rest of you from here forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trip. This is Max Kirschbaum, Public Works and Utilities Director. This evening, the slides that I have prepared are again very similar to slides that we saw last week. I'll have a comment on that and a recommendation for your consideration for next week. Next slide, please, Matt. So we'll stick with the use of the statewide map that shows the county specific data as it's posted on the CDPHE website. You'll see that this week looks exactly like it did last week. There is no change to the current stage or any of the counties shown on the map, including on this slide, Adams, and on the next slide, Matt, is the Jefferson County. So moving on, I would like to make a comment on the next, on the next slide, please. As we showed last week, this one is dedicated to the the primary metrics that the public health officers will use to base their decisions for the determination of the color code, as well as watching the trends of that data. In this case, what I'd like to point out specifically would be if you take a look at the new case data and percent positivity lines and a focusing on the yellow and orange portions. We do continue to track that that specific case data in the two counties as well as the the percent positivity rate. Presently, as of yesterday, Adams County is reporting 257 cases per 100,000 over the last 14 day period. If you recall what the mayor shared with you last week and the week prior, this is once again a very significant jump in the data and that curve is moving very steeply, steeply upward for Adams County. They are also, for the first time, hitting a point where it's a positivity rate greater than 5%. That stands at 7% now. So while while that percent positivity is still in the yellow, the the first data point, the new case data at 257 is already exceeding the designation of level two yellow. What the, what Dr. Douglas has explained, and his staff has has explained is that there would be, there is a period of time in which this trend is monitored and even a grace period before any color code change is implemented by any public health officer. And the reason for that is we certainly wouldn't want to be jumping up and down the dial. So I think there is a deliberate approach and monitoring of trend before you would see a switch. So at this time, Adams County remains in the yellow. But I'm I'm sure Tri-County Health is paying very close attention to this. While we stay on this slide, I'll also share then that the Jefferson County number is at 113 cases per 100,000 over the last 14 day period. So that is a, that two for them continues a an upward trend, but not nearly as significant. The state level data is at 135, which again, for the state is a, an increase in in number, but not nearly as steep as the Adams County number. On a positivity rate, Jefferson County is at 2.9%, so that's less than, less than five. So it's, it's well below the 10% to stay in the yellow. And as a state, that positivity rate, as reported even today, is at about 3.6% statewide. Okay, I'll quickly move on to the next, the next two slides. Again, not for specific discussion, but to indicate that these are the restrictions by facility type based on the the criteria that we, the metrics that we just talked about on the previous slide. So that's where we stand at the moment in terms of case data. The recommendation for you this evening is that we, we would come back and report this data anytime there is a potential change or a change in the color code. But that if it remains steady, there really isn't a reason to continue to present this same color coded map. That's the recommendation for your consideration. Happy to go either way at at your preference. That's all I have for this evening.
Thanks, Max. Yeah, just an update from the meeting that we had with Tri-County. As Max indicated, we've seen some significant jumps basically since September 24th. Remember, on the 24th, we were at 153, the 28th at 200. And then at the end of September, on October the first, we saw our first at 223. And then over the weekend, we went to 259.5. We have dropped back to 257. The indicator is that this is on a very steep line and with a positivity rate of 7% now. On Friday of last week, Tri-County was scheduled to meet with CDPHE to discuss a mitigation plan for what they will do to try to bring these numbers back down. We do not have the results of that meeting. Probably won't get that until our next meeting with Tri-County, which is on Thursday. But as Dr. Douglas explained to us at the meeting on Thursday, we would have two weeks from the day of the meeting that they had on Friday. Depending upon the outcome of the meeting, they would give them Tri-County two weeks to come up with a mitigation plan and institute that plan. They would have an additional two week grace period to see if the plan is doing what they proposed to do. And if not, then the county and the state would have to meet again to see if they're going to move them to another higher level. If they confirm the 259, that puts us at level three of the high risk, which is still safer at home, but it implicates, impacts to us as a city and to our businesses as well. But Max is absolutely correct. That decision has not been made yet. So we're waiting on guidance from Tri-County. One of the things that we got on Friday also, as Max indicated, from Jefferson County is even though their infection rate is at about 112, the positivity rate is about a third of what Adams County is. One of the things that came out of there was some of the places that they have discovered where the infections are coming from. One of the things that they talk about is that they referred 348 cases to CDPHE to be further investigated beyond the county. But of those that the county investigated, they found that the infections, 75 of those were coming from existing households, 23 from social gatherings, 51 from the workplaces, and unknown possible community acquired 77. I think one of the interesting pieces that they, that Dr. Johnson gave out says many of the K through 12 students in the system actually indicated contact with positive household members rather than exposure at school. So it's the social side of these, not so much the big group gathers. Cause we don't, we haven't had a lot of that indicated in either Adams or Jefferson County over the last few weeks, similar to what we've seen in Boulder or up in Fort Collins with the colleges. But it's, it looks like it's more people having the backyard barbecue, the home parties. Those seem to be based upon the numbers that Jeffco gave out of where their infections are primarily coming from. This level of detail, I've asked Tri-County if they have a way to to separate that. I'm hoping to hear something on Thursday when I talk to them again to see if they have anything that close to this kind of a breakdown of where the numbers are coming from. But I don't have that for tonight. It's apparent that we are still in trouble in Adams County, more so than Jefferson County. And they're probably in the top two to three counties in the state right now for the infection rates between us, Boulder and Laramie Counties. That seems to be the big ones right now. So we're definitely not moving at all toward protect our neighbors. We're not even moving toward level one for a caution, which would then again, give us some latitude of what we can do with our businesses. It's important that we continue to push our neighbors to comply, to do what we can to keep from having groups gathered that are not social distancing. So it's, it behooves us as much as possible to push these. I expect we'll get an update on Thursday as to what the county is going to do and what they have proposed to the state for the mitigation plan. So I don't have any other update on that area between now and then. Counselor Demott?
First thing, and I think you and I talked about this last time I saw you, but I think it's important for people to know, and it's the same question I ask every week is, is what's going on with hospitalizations and mortality rate? If I heard right, the last time we looked at that, that has been staying pretty static as far as not going up and we're not, you know, overcrowding our hospitals.
That's correct. Our, our numbers in Jefferson County, I don't have a hospital number there, but in Adams County, I'm talking to the CEOs and what we saw from the health department, we have not seen a spike in hospitalization that is anywhere near what we're seeing on the infection rate and the positivity rate. So the indication is even though they're infected, we're not seeing as high a level of severity in the infection that we might. But for right now, and I hope it doesn't change, that our hospitals are still in a good shape.
And with that being said, Mayor, when we have these discussions or you have these discussions with Tri-County and Jefferson County, is there any sense that at some point, we're going to reevaluate our, our process of mitigation, knowing that it seems, you know, it's potential, maybe we're reaching herd immunity or whatever? When do they go back and say, you know, we, we've, you know, made, managed to not overwhelm our hospitals, hospitals? Thank God. And, you know, this is what it's looking like and we're not having as many severe cases. At some point, are they going to reevaluate the mitigation steps that are in place and how we're actually dealing with the virus? Or has there been any discussion of that? Because I mean, I, and I mean, the reason I ask is at some point, I just want to know that we're, we're reevaluating if the virus is changing. You know, we're getting into the cold season. I am obviously concerned that people stay healthy. I'm also concerned that economically, businesses that are, have survived to this point get to survive through the winter. And so I'm just curious, you know, are those discussions being had? If they're not, is that something that from our perspective as a city that we start asking some of those questions so that we understand moving forward? You know, at some point, are we going to reevaluate how we're looking at this virus?
Counselor Demott, I can't tell you what the state is really thinking because I don't talk to CDPHE, but most of that decision process is at the state level, not really is driven down to the counties of what they're going to do with that. Because if you remember this color chart that we're looking at the pinwheel, that's the state. It's not either one of our counties.
So there's not, they're not really taking feedback then from the the county is what I'm hearing from you.
I don't, I can't tell you that that's true or not because I'm not in the conversation between the county and the state. But I know that the state is extremely level, working on this color chart. That's why they've tried to make it a little bit easier to deal with. But if we still see big outbreaks like we're seeing in Boulder and Laramie and Adams, I think it's going to be hard pressed to convince them to start relaxing stuff. Now, they may on a county by county basis, which they've already done. Remember, there's five counties that right now are at the level of protect our neighbors. They're really going to benefit from the counties and what they're doing to get their numbers down.
The other question I had, and this should be an easy one, and if I missed it in Max's presentation, I apologize. Has our amount of testing gone up? Are we kind of like, where are we at? And how many tests we're processing per week?
Again, you'd have to go to the test facility because remember, we just lost the big center at Aurora and the Pepsi Center, both of those are now closed. The last summer I had on Thursday, that what we are seeing at the big test center at Waterworld, capacity of 2,500 a day and we're barely seeing 500 a day tested.
Cool. Thank you very much for the information.
Counselor Demott and council, the council's question prompts me to ask you, would you like me to ask Dr. John Douglas to come to one of your upcoming meetings and address you?
I, I personally appreciate that offer and I think it would be nice to have him come back and from his perspective, see, you know, if they're listening the other way and and how we're reevaluating the virus as this goes on. Because, you know, I know just from what I've learned throughout this year, it, it seems like they do expect at some point, you know, the human body deals with it different. And I'm just curious if we're at that point or if, you know, we think we're on a good trajectory as far as where we're going with this.
Counselor Seymour, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You, I had this in the queue and then you partially answered that. And I appreciate that update as far as the breakdown. And and hopefully we can get to the point as And and hopefully we can get to the point as we get extended tracing. Uh, to find out, uh, in fact, how many people have contacted by going to the store? How many people have contacted by going to a retail outlet grocery store? Or going to a restaurant, because I think that's critical data for our businesses to know also. And then hopefully that our state would recognize that fact when Adams County um looks for a variance on that. Because our our businesses cannot afford a twenty five percent rollback. Um, and also, you know, and it it affects everything even across that line as far as faith based groups too. So. The uh, this is a serious situation, I know, but but. On the lighter side, Jefferson County welcomes all healthy people to do business with us.
Mayor Protim Sights.
Um, thank you, Director Kirschbaum, for this presentation and. Definitely not great news for Adams County. I had a quick couple of questions on the previous slide if someone could put it back up. Okay, um, it sounded like the level of new cases was. While that put us in in safer level three, um, our percent positivity did not. Um, but what was alarming to me is it wasn't, it didn't feel like it was that far off a number from the stay at home severe level. And so with what the mayor was saying, I was wondering. At some point, if we like leapfrog into a. You know, skip a level with our our cases, does that expedite that almost four week process that he described in. Changing the. The metric or changing the color coding? Is anyone following my question?
Yeah, I think I do. You're asking about if we jump up to the three fifty, does that change the mitigation plan?
Correct. Does it expedite their pushing us into another level? From from level two, do they push us more quickly to level three? Do they push us? Do they do the stay at home? Like, is is there some? Triggering event that they may not give us a full month? To implement a mitigation plan.
Yeah, basically, as indicated, that number, if it goes above three fifty, would have to be there for at least two weeks.
Okay.
Because they they don't, they don't confirm it on a one week. They want at least two weeks of steady numbers.
Correct, and that's the two week number. That's what I'm, I mean, by definition, it would have to have been two weeks, correct?
Correct.
Um, okay. My second, and this was similar to Counselor Demott's. Um, I know the mayor answered it, but um. Is the the stable declining? Is it stable increasing or declining in hospitalizations right now? I, even if it's not a huge number, I'd like to know which direction we're going.
Mr. Mayor, I could, I can lend a little bit of info there. I. Looking at the state data today on hospitalizations. It's been on a slow and steady climb statewide. It's it's a little over. Two hundred hospitalizations at this point. And as you may recall, from the very beginning, the state had declared. A capacity of about eighteen hundred statewide hospital beds. So. While that number is growing, it's still relatively small. And that's similar within the the data that's being reported in both Adams and Jefferson County.
Okay, that's. Yeah, clearly more relevant for us if the. Hospitalizations are going up um. Compared to our bed capacity in both counties. Okay. Um. So I have a quick question, or you asked us if we liked kind of this format with the dials, and while it's been fine to understand kind of what the significance is of each level. I much prefer the previous data that you distributed to show us. The curve, how sharp it is. Um, it would be nice to have. Kind of both. Um, to Counselor Seymour's, um, that positivity rating, you always showed us how many tests were taken and then what percentage was positivity. So it kind of at a glance. Gave us quite a bit of information, and if at all possible, since it's one of the metrics they use. To have that hospitalization data, um, because maybe I would love for the COVID to have mutated, and it's not as significant, but. Um, I don't want to use kind of anecdotal evidence to to feel that way or to push that way. Um. And then finally, I I really agree with Counselor Seymour, and I believe Counselor Demott said this, that. Um, that contact tracing is really important to understand where people are getting infected, why Adams County is an outlier. Um. So that we can. Have the right sized response that has the least impact to the communities, the business, the education that we're hitting. Um, I was heartened to hear the mayor saying it wasn't really in the schools. So far, they found in Jefferson County that these infections are coming. Um. You know, that's great news if that holds, but just so we're right sizing and not having a a blanket response that has such a a huge impact on us, but um. Recognizing you're not the one, uh, Director Kirschbaum. Doing all of this, but I think that data helps us as policymakers know who to what to advocate for and what what regulations we should set. So thank you.
Before we move on, I've had a couple of.
Don't you have any further comment?
I'd like to close the loop on a couple of things that were said here. First of all, um, do you want us to take time in your agenda when when Dr. Douglas is available to have him come and speak? Uh, that's the first one. And and then the second one, Mayor Protim Sights has asked us to. Uh, begin providing, um, again, the information, and there's a couple of options for that. We can, of course, provide that to you weekly. We can, we can email that to you. Um. Or we can provide, and we could provide it as a part of Monday night's presentation. Maybe I'll start with Counselor Sights on the second one there. Um, would you like to see this presented Monday night, or if we sent it to you during the week, uh, would that meet uh your expectation or hope that? You had this additional information and then please on Dr. Douglas, unless I hear otherwise, we'll pursue him.
Very supportive of having Dr. Douglas here. Um, I'm sorry, I thought Director Kirschbaum had asked us if we felt these. Were still relevant, and I feel like they're fine, but they're not as relevant as what we were getting before. If that comes in an email. Um, I I think a very quick dashboard showing each of these three metrics and where they're at with our two counties. Um, and and where we're at, which level we're at, I think would be wonderful. Um. Like a one, but it doesn't have to happen in this format. If if my colleagues don't want it, I just think that data is relevant.
Any other comments from Council?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Tripp, let's move on to the next item. Thanks, Max. Hold on a minute. Hang on a minute. Counselor Scully, sorry.
I I just wanted to say that I would support. Um, having Dr. Douglas come and speak at one of our public meetings. Um, to talk to the public and us about. What is happening and and what we need to be aware of at this time. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else before we move on? Mr. Frankel, I think you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave Frankel, City Attorney. I'm here to provide you the monthly update as far as the emergency declaration that was entered by City Council back in March of this year. As you're aware, uh, the remote meetings such as tonight's meeting continue to be held. Uh, pursuant to the changes that were made to the code under the emergency declaration. Um, we have also extended the deadline for adoption of the budget. Budget adoption now is extended to November thirtieth. And we continue to track eligible FEMA reimbursable expenses that are incurred during the state of emergency. Um, I have an update for you this evening as far as a proposed emergency order that we are preparing. Um, which would contemplate occupancy of the council chambers as we prepare for in person meetings. Um, facilities and staff with the city have evaluated the capacity of. Uh, the council chambers and as well as the lobby of City Hall, where we would anticipate members of the public coming in for. Uh, council meetings, and we want to ensure that the capacities are reflecting the best practice social distancing calculators that are put forward by the state CDPHE. As well as the local county health department. So. Um, we are preparing for city managers consideration. An order which would establish reduced capacities for upcoming in person meetings at City Hall. And pursuant to the code, any emergency order that the city manager signs then goes before council for ratification. Or at least consideration where city council can ratify that order. I wanted to bring this to your attention just as we approach October twelfth, um, and then October nineteenth and October twenty sixth, so the three upcoming Mondays. Um, which have reopening of facilities um scheduled. The twelfth is for City Hall for staff, the nineteenth, that Monday, I believe, would be the first city council meeting where in person attendance would be contemplated. As well as the twenty sixth, the following Monday. So in advance of those, we were hoping to get some. Um, established capacity limits for the room so that we will be able to advise members of the public as they. Enter the facility, uh, how much room we have and um. And at some point, if the capacity is reached, uh, we will need to not add more people into that capacity. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. The other aspects of that order, which we are evaluating now are. The procedures that would be in place for in person meetings and the wearing of face coverings and whether other. Um, public health steps would want to be included in that order so that we would have some clarity uh in advance of those public meetings. So if you have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Mr. Frankel, do you have the the capacity numbers already, or are you still working on those?
What um my team is doing is drafting the order. I don't believe that the capacity numbers are in our draft yet. Um, but we have been working with facilities, and I understand that they are developing the capacity numbers for both the city council chambers as well as the lobby of City Hall. Which would, I understand, be something of a staging area as people come in and out of the council chambers.
So the the uh. Order that you're talking about would be something will be on our agenda for next Monday?
Correct. It could, if if city manager signs off on the order, we would put it on to your agenda next Monday for consideration. And that would set some guidelines for our upcoming in person face to face meetings.
Okay. Council, any questions on what Mr. Frankel has advised you on?
Right, well, thank you, and I believe next up will be Jason Gang to address other facility reopening questions.
Thank you, Dave, and uh, it's good to be with you this evening, Mayor and Council, and. I just have a couple of quick updates to focus on the things that are right on the horizon, certainly I can answer any additional questions you might have. So, uh, as you know, Parks, Recreation and Libraries and other citywide facilities continue to move forward with. Progressive openings, and I have a few to bring to you this evening. Westview Recreation Center, uh, we will reopen Westview to the public on October seventh, uh, allowing up to fifty people at a time to the weight room cardio area as well as the walking track. City Park Recreation Center will open on to the public on October twelfth with limited access to the weight room as well as the first reopening of racquetball courts. Uh, amongst all the three facilities with racquetball courts. Uh, the Westminster Sports Center will start the first phase of its opening on October nineteenth. Focusing on adult sports leagues and field rentals and drop in play, but not for spectators just in the first uh phase, just to make sure we're. We're meeting expectations from public health numbers gathering. Uh, two more quick updates for you, youth and teen after school programming, which has been somewhat challenging just with all the challenges with schools and. And the things that we're all facing, but in fact, on starting on October twelfth, after school programs will begin at Wayne Carl Middle School. And finally, the last update I have for you for now is that we are partnering with Tri County Health. Offering free flu shots. Uh, the city in Tri County will partner. Uh, there is no pre-registration required. Uh, they will be offered at City Park on Saturday, October tenth. And October seventeenth from eleven AM to two PM, and we're doing that uh to accompany uh the park. The recreation activities are going on such as soccer and and try to uh try to expose a Tri County Health opportunities for the shot clinics as many people as possible. That's all I have for you uh this evening as far as your openings, unless there's any further questions. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from Council? All right, seeing nothing else. Mr. Door, I think you're up next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to have a follow up study session on the proposed twenty twenty one budget. Uh, the council has received financial updates weekly and has met on weekend dates in July and September in preparation for adopting the twenty twenty one budget. Uh, the council has taken unprecedented steps by delaying the adoption of the budget so as to better understand the financial impacts of COVID nineteen. The council has chosen to adopt a one year budget instead of the city's traditional two year. Both of these changes were made due to significant financial uncertainties and public health uncertainties as you've been discussing tonight. At your last meeting on Saturday, September nineteenth, staff received several follow up questions that were addressed in an extensive staff report uh last week. Additionally, staff has developed three alternative proposals to budget items presented on September nineteenth. For your review and consideration. Uh, tonight, the staff has no formal presentation for you so that council may have significant time to discuss the budget and ask any questions of staff. Uh, at this point, staff is seeking direction on which items should be included or not included in the next draft. Of the proposed budget so that it may be adopted by council. Uh, Mr. Mayor, turn it back to you. Uh, we have in staff report twenty five follow up items that we've addressed on some thirty plus pages. Uh, we have a. A team of subject matter experts available to answer any questions on those. Uh, follow up items, those reference materials. Uh, I would suggest we could move through some of those questions and answers first, if it would please the council. Uh, we have three alternative budget proposals for your consideration, which were also included as an attachment to your agenda tonight. Uh, we would seek your direction uh and consensus on those alternatives to a place in a revised version of the proposed budget. Um, I will uh be sure to make sure that any open matters, any unanswered questions are. A clear to everyone tonight so that when we move forward with the next draft. Of the proposed budget that we're sure to capture your direction and your uh choices as we move through to an adopted uh city council's budget. Uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, I I turn it back to you, and perhaps we can proceed through the the reference items with any questions and answers and. I tell you what, I will uh power off my uh camera, and I will just attempt to uh direct the various staff members who might respond to. Uh, the questions that are the reference items that are within your uh staff report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council, going back to the. Document labeled in our packet, the proposed twenty twenty one budget retreat follow up. There were a number of questions that were presented by members of the council. I think they have tried to capture those and provide a response. So instead of reading everyone, I'm going to go through and just uh quickly go to them. If you have. An item that was yours that you're not satisfied with the answer you have. Because this does not tell me who asked the question. So I'll try to cover these as quick as we can, and then if uh someone has a comment. We'll we'll try to get those answered. The question one was how does the employee turnover rate comparatively years past? Was there any follow up on that one? All right, going on to the next one. How much did the four vacant and scheduled to be filled communication positions on Chief Innovation Officer cost? You have that information provided?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a question about that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Can I ask staff? We have four positions listed here at item number two. How many have we lost? Is it, is that, so we, I know we have one. At least one or maybe two staff people, but down from six or. Someone give me an idea of where we are with how many staff we had in that communications division in the city manager's office versus what we have now. So what were we and what are we, what are we at now staff at the staffing level?
Thank you, Counselor Vols. It's Larry Door speaking. I'd like to invite Deputy State Manager Jody Andrews to describe uh those position vacancies and staff loads. Mr. Andrews?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Door. If I could return to that in in just a couple of minutes, I just want to pull up a file and my computer uh is not cooperating right now, so I'll just take a couple of minutes and I'll pull it up. I just want to be. I just want to be accurate with that answer, if I could, please.
Well, because I know that we had, Jody was there, Joe was there, Angelo's there, they're all not there now, so those positions are vacant. I just wondered, who's still there? I mean, so Ryan Hagerness is there, we have that staff individual. Is Jonathan still working there? I mean, I guess I don't know the status of what what we're funding up currently.
Yes, let me, these four positions, the vacancies here precede one of the staff members' departure that you mentioned, Counselor Vols. So let me just confirm which four these are. I'll just get back to you in a couple of minutes.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
All right, while he's looking up that, let's go to the next question. We can come back to the one with Counselor Vols.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews, and Mr. Mayor, if it would please you and be useful, we've also numbered these for each of the subject, if you want to make a reference to that, if that might be more expedient for you, sir.
Yeah, I'm just going to item number three, question three. And it's on top of page five. Counselor Demont?
I actually was on the other one, so I don't know if you want to go back to that, or if you want me to put my question out there, so when they come back to it.
On item two?
On two. I'm just, I'm just curious the impact if we don't fill these positions. I mean, that's a wide question, because they're different positions, but...
I'll have Mr. Andrews answer that when he comes back with the file he's got, so all right?
Yep, that's perfect. Thank you.
Okay. All right, going back to top of page five, question three. So any follow-up, anyone on that one? All right, going on to question four, top of page six. And instead of waiting for you to type something in, I'm trying to watch all the cameras. If you just wave or something, I'll know you want to talk. And try to speed things up as much as we can. All right, going to top of page seven. Question five. Top of page eight. Question six. Counselor Demont?
I don't necessarily have a question, but as I look at some of this stuff with some of the rec centers and stuff, I have concern about the amount of money that's in some of this stuff in in a year such as this, and wondering, you know, if some of these things could be deferred. You know, and it's a big list, so I don't want to go through the whole list. But if, I don't know how hard it would be for them to provide by priority things that, you know, it's going to be detrimental if they don't do it this year, potentially they could push it off a year, and it would not be that big of an impact. Specifically around the parks, the parks and rec facilities, frankly, with, you know, they're not getting much use, and we don't know, I mean, I know we're reopening them, but they're still limited capacity. We're not bringing in the same amount of money, so I just have some concerns around some of those expenditures.
Did you look at the priority listings that's on the far left-hand side of that column?
So if they're priority one, and I apologize, I missed that. If it was a snake, it would have bit me. But with those being prioritized, though, does that mean that if we don't do them this year, that what does that mean? Like, they're saying that they're top priority. If I say, okay, no, replace the stair handrail, I say no. What's, what does that mean to the facilities? Is that, you know, going to put us into a position where we are going to potentially be liable for a lawsuit? Or is it just, you know, looks ugly for a year?
Mayor and Counselor Demont, if I might just ask Director Gank if he could talk just at a high level about the prioritization process and things considered both by our facilities, general services, and also his department in terms of some of the things happening at, I think you referenced a few of the park rec and library-type activities. So Director Gank, if you could talk about those at high level, perhaps that will provide some context, sir?
Yeah, thanks, Larry. Director of Parks, Recreation and Libraries, Jason Gank, I appreciate the question. We went through a process in the department to solely focus on things that are items that are of critical nature as far as maintaining the facilities that we have, to make sure we're keeping up with maintenance plans and expectations of our aging facilities, as well as any particular commitments that we've ever, that we've already made for that we may have partnerships on, for example, things like the Westminster Station Park. But by and large, the type of questions you're asking about, that council's asking about, I believe, are those maintenance and projects. And I want to reassure council that the department did go through with a fine-toothed comb to examine each of these projects and determine how important they are, given our economic impacts. As a matter of fact, the department, with that process in mind, reduced their capital program, Parks, Recreation and Libraries reduced their initial capital program by $4 million as far as really pushing towards the funding we absolutely need to maintain the facilities that we have and kind of taking care of what we have and living within those available means. So just at a high level, that was the approach that we took when it came to the overall assessment of how we're going to be pursuing the capital program and the...
I don't know if we lost Mr. Gank or not, but I'm curious on like priority three, I'm looking at these. And again, I still don't really understand what determines the priority one, priority two, priority three, and if we push them off. I mean, if the council came back and said, hey, we want you to shave another $1 million off this, or another half a million dollars off this, is there things in there that are going to, you could shave off for another year, and it's not going to be detrimental for, you know, for being a lawsuit, or having a, you know, a hole in the top of a building or something? That's, you know, going to not be able to be pushed off a year? And I'm just trying to understand the process, and I'm sure that you guys were diligent and went through this. I know this is a painful process, but, you know, we're still in a pretty rough place, being asked to make some hard decisions. And so when I look at some of the things that we're asking to totally do away with, and then I look at these lists of some of these capital improvement programs, one wonders if, you know, some of those things lower down on the priority list couldn't be pushed off a year, and maybe we don't get rid of things like the recycling centers, or, you know, or whatever it is, in order to, you know, kind of maintain some of that stuff for another year, and then reevaluate after we kind of really actually see what happens going to 21.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Demont, for that follow-up. And essentially, how we've laid out our priorities, as far as the top priorities, and then going on down the list, and how we're going to be pursuing those, you know, a couple of things come to mind. Absolutely certain, with certainty, if the direction was, and we'd appreciate that this evening, to the extent possible, to have a particular, if there's to be reduction and come back to council. I believe we've set up a date coming up later in the month to come back with any additional questions. As a follow-up, we can do that. But staff work diligently to try to prioritize the rankings as you see in the packet with the things that are absolutely most important to do. And then, you know, the other part of this, and maybe Larry can join me back on this, is to say that, you know, these are the prioritization. With all that said, you know, these don't really move forward automatically into the next year, and certainly staff is going to be looking very closely at the economic recovery as to pursuing these projects. Now, as I mentioned earlier, yes, we did reduce $4 million off the capital program in an effort to look at things that could absolutely be on hold and not proposed, considering all the economic constraints. And what staff really tried to present to you are the things that are of the utmost urgency to continue to maintain our facilities at a high level. But Larry, would you mind joining me on that other question I mentioned about the implementation of these things?
Thank you, Director Gank. Yes, Larry Dorr speaking again. You know, one of the things I'd like counsel to have a little bit more information on is the relative restriction of the sources of funds and what they may be used on. That's one of the things at play here as well. And I'd like to ask Assistant City Manager Chris Lindsay to talk a little bit about, first, the restriction of funds and what certain revenue sources can be used for. And also, would you describe the prioritization undertaken by our capital projects assessment team? And as, how do we move forward with certain facility replacements and so forth? And we may also ask our General Services Director, Matthew Boko, to come on and talk a little bit about that prioritization as well. Mr. Lindsay?
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. To the first question on restrictions. So most of the funds used within the proposed 2021 capital plan for parks facilities are restricted as to their use. So a number of those have restrictions because they are from parks-related funding sources like Post or several other sources. So those, if we choose not to move forward with one of those items, aren't necessarily available to be used for any purpose. I think that that would be the response to Mr. Dorr's first question. The second one is, we've had a...
Did you, real quick, before you get away from that, you said not necessarily. So are these projects wholly funded by one source, being Post, or some of them split between general fund and post funds?
I believe I can say with certainty that all the PRNL, PRNL facilities projects are not from the general fund.
Okay, great, thank you.
The general revenue streams. The, there is a general facilities, major maintenance capital project. That's under the general list. That is a generally funded revenue stream project. But those that are PRNL-specific are restricted funding sources.
Okay, great.
And then to speak to Mr. Dorr's second question. The team has done a fairly, fairly intensive prioritization process just this year due to COVID-19 and the financial impacts. We've cut back on the capital plan numerous times, especially that general funded side. But also, I would say the parks-funded side that has those restricted revenue streams, we have been, we have been very diligent with as well, because those revenue streams could support other priorities or people as well, if need be.
Great.
Mr. Lindsay, in looking at those, and Mayor Protim sites, I've got you up next. But in those ones, you've modified as priority ones, and starting into the priority two, as you look at the description of the item, a lot of these seem to be around public health and safety. Would that be a fair assumption? For like makeup air, well, that's, that's the air in the building. A broken stairwell, to Counselor Demont's point, that could be a public safety issue. But most of those all seem to be around that area. Is that a fair assessment?
I would ask if we bring up somebody from General Services or Facilities, if we want to talk about what those prioritization codes mean. They're a little bit, they're a little bit more conversant than that than I'm going to be.
Yeah, and I think that's one part of what Counselor Demont is trying to get at. What really is defining priorities one, two, and three?
Good evening. This is Matthew Boko, General Services Director. So I tried to capture the questions that are being asked. And first of all, facilities has went through a very extensive process doing a facility condition assessment. So that goes into our planning process, where we look at each of our facilities. We look at each of those systems, whether they're envelope systems on the outside of the building, mechanical, and those all received a very thorough assessment. So then all of that information was then implemented into a software system called Moca, which looks out and says, what are the priorities? What are the age of these systems versus their expected life? And that's how this priority was developed. So many of these systems were already beyond their expected life, like the makeup air units at City Hall and the air handling units at City Park. So the question is, is we could defer those, you know, into out-years based on the approved budget. The concern is, is we've already pressed a lot of these systems beyond their expected life, and if we continue to press that, number one, the chance for reactive pairs increases. And then as we push these further out, of course, the cost of inflation. It's not that these projects can be put off forever, so we eventually have to continue to move those forward. So this is part of a very large process over our 32 facilities that we look at very carefully, and the prioritization list reflects a lot of that. So to your point, Mayor, yes, the air handling units, that increases our ability to exchange air inside of our facilities, which is now more important than ever, considering the COVID crisis that we're underneath. So hopefully that provides some answers. I'd be happy to take some additional questions.
I guess the only other question I have on that, and I appreciate you running down that path with me, because I think it's important for both myself and anyone who's listening to understand as we make these choices. I guess the other thing is, is this list feasible to actually complete next year? So I know in the past, like even the communications thing, which I know we're going to come back to, some of those positions were, you know, we voted on those last year, and they're still not filled, for whatever reason. So, you know, in any of these kind of things, obviously, there's resources that it's going to take to complete these things, and, you know, a lot of logistics. Does this list reflect things that are actually completable in a year's period? So if we're going to fund them, that they'll actually get completed. Because if, you know, if there's any question on that, that would be another area where, you know, I want to make sure we're just doing a list that has to be done, that can actually be completed next year in such a tight budget year.
Thank you for the question, Counselor Demont. So yes, the first list represents the 2020 planned projects that were developed, you know, and reviewed, that that current funding is frozen. So between that list and the second list, which reflects the 2021 proposed projects, we have a project management team within our facilities division that consists of three individuals. And I have talked with them and our facilities manager, Brian Gruselski, and he has confirmed that if we are given the green light on both of these lists, that it will be a push, but our intent would to have these completed by year-end of 2021.
Perfect. Thank you. That's all the questions I have on this section. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mayor Protim sites, you had a question. And let's try to keep these as high-level as we can. We can get down in the weeds, and we'll be here till tomorrow.
All right. So I do have questions. I'm not sure if this was in reference to my question that I asked during the budget discussion or not. But I had asked, because there were quite a few capital parks and recs expenditures in the proposed budget book that we received, I had asked for basically understanding if the dollars were encumbered, right? If they were dedicated to that purpose, and to have that listed. And then I did ask about prioritization, how it was, not what it was prioritized, but how it was prioritized, especially in reference to our strategic plan goals. So I was kind of frustrated when I went through this this week, that that information wasn't really forthcoming for us as far as this document is concerned. So I appreciate Director Boko kind of going through on a life expectancy level of prioritization. I was trying to understand with that mandate from city council, how it was also prioritized. I found this document really hard to cross-reference with what we were given originally in the proposed budget book, right? Because these are much more fine-grained. What we were given before was much more broad. So things like library materials acquisition, we had in the capital improvement program for $100,000. I don't see it on this list, even though it is CIP. And there's a whole host of things like that. The City Park, the $1 million for City Park Recreation, I'm assuming that's multiple things within here. But it's kind of difficult for us to go back and look and see what we were first presented, and then how that falls in with this list. Can I hear from someone, I don't know who the appropriate person is, how, as far as our strategic, or I guess our vision statement, how these were prioritized?
Mayor Protim sites, this is Chris Lindsay, if I could take a shot at that. So first, the list that's provided in this specific question is speaking to facilities, major maintenance projects within general services. So that's why you don't have the full list that you you just mentioned some some projects from. This is this is specific to just general services, facilities, maintenance. And I believe it was actually the mayor that asked this question. In terms of
There was not a response to my question. Is that what I'm hearing? I had just hoped that I was kind of clumsy in how I asked it. But so there is not within this document or response to that question that I posed to staff.
There's not a response within this document, and I apologize for that. I thought we had addressed this during the retreat.
You told me you answered it, but I had asked more for the prioritization piece.
And in terms of how staff prioritized capital in particular, if I could refer you to page 57 of the actual budget document, if you have that in front of you. So towards the middle of the page, there's a bullet point list of the guiding principles that staff used that are in no particular order. And I let me read those for those that don't have don't have that right in front of them. Protects health and safety, leverages matching funds, saves operating expenses or generates new revenue, preserves assets, policy commitments, and geographic balance.
That's great. I actually referenced that when I asked my question during the budget retreat. So I understood that. And I asked specifically how things were prioritized against the vision statement that we as a council had come up with. And I know you had mentioned, hey, we've already answered that some of these are encumbered. But I said, what I'd like to understand is how within that, which first off, which which dollars are encumbered or already committed to a specific purpose. But then where did the fingerprint of our vision hit? How was that folded in? Because there hasn't been a lot of cohesive visioning as this council, but that vision statement was one of the things. And so I just didn't want to see that articulated as well. But my understanding then is that's not going to be forthcoming tonight.
You're correct. That's not forthcoming tonight. And I I apologize for that. I would note that that when project managers submit their requests, we tie them back to the vision. I hope that in some form or fashion within the descriptions that are provided, we can connect the dots. But I I would be happy to provide more information in terms of how our capital planning connects to the vision and a follow up.
And if I may, Mr. Lindsay and Mayor Pretend typically in our, I think, in our extended final adopted budget, we would have a matrix that would connect the various vision points with the particular capital projects. I appreciate that it would be council's desire to see that in advance to better understand the the projects and how they immediately connect to the vision. So I think what we can offer, what we'd like to do in the interim is to provide just that, since we don't have it here tonight, we've got these general services projects and a little bit greater description. But of course, our the document that we've provided and the process that we're on is a little bit unusual, given our delayed in revenue forecast and trying to receive as much input that can guide our decisions as possible. So if I may offer it is a connection of through an interim report, a connection of those vision points to these various capital projects with that. Could that work? And we'll do that before the final budget is presented and adopted and drafted for presentation to council and the residents.
Well, we'll have to. Yeah, that that's fine. I did ask the question with the context of it's very important for us to be able to communicate these trade offs to our residents. And as counselors, that that is our role. And so I really, that's valuable, that qualitative element of prioritization is important. So I'll I'll wait for that at a later date. And my apologies, I this was the closest thing to answering that question. So I presumed it was that.
Mr. Andrews, do you have your stuff for question that we skipped?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I apologize for the delay. We were waiting. I appreciate the opportunity to come back and speak to this. I believe the question is of the four positions listed, which ones are vacant vacant because of staff departures and which ones were never filled? I can also provide some additional information around that question of if I could, Counselor Volz, which may help with the bigger picture. In total, there are 13 communications positions citywide, and those are some of those are centralized and some of those are spread out into various departments. So of the 13, we currently have seven vacancies out of those 13, which is about a 53% vacancy rate in our in our central and distributed communication positions. What you see here in this presentation of material is that four of those seven vacancies have been prioritized in this budget, in this balanced budget. And so those four are the ones listed. Two of those have been vacated by staff departures and two of those have not been filled prior to this to this budget. What staff did was take the total vacancies of seven, reevaluate which of those we ought to proceed with, given the current environment, particularly the COVID communication and engagement needs. And these are the four that staff recommended proceeding with out of the total seven vacancies. And for clarity, it's the first two positions listed, the communication and marketing officer and the digital media specialist, which were vacated positions following to the lead graphic designer and the videographer videography specialist are positions that have not been filled prior. I would note that the first of those positions, the communication and marketing officer position has been downgraded from what it was before. So that is a lower salary level than than it was when that position was previously filled. So of the remaining positions that would not be filled, two of those have been frozen and for clarity and completeness. One of those is a digital media specialist. That's the second of two positions. You'll see one submitted in the budget. There is a second position that we are not recommended recommended being advanced because that one is on the frozen status, as well as the administrative assistant for that team. We would not recommend filling that at this time. That would be a frozen position. Since this budget was put together and reviewed last by city council, there has been an additional departure that's included in the seven vacancies I described at the beginning. That is our parks, recreation and libraries, communication coordinator position. And that position is now, like all others that are vacated, currently under review. So but that is included in the total seven vacant positions that I cited.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. That's thorough, good information. We had had a position for council outreach. Is that no longer a position within the communications department?
Thank you, Counselor Volz. That's a very good question. We are looking at how that role may be filled now with the reduced staffing levels in this in this department that it that is, sorry, in this division. That's a very high priority for us. We spent some time today talking about that. And we would recommend that we come back with a proposal for council as to how we would meet council's needs in this area. We we are looking at existing positions, of course, and the redistribution of our work. Either in this case that you see before you, which is the recommended positions moving forward, or if there's something different than that, we would have to come back to city council and advise as to how we would meet that need. At this time, it is a priority for the team. We just have to figure out what our staffing level is before we can finalize assignments to get that taken care of.
Well, yeah, okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. It's an ongoing process. I get that. I I guess I was one counselor who had kind of advocated for holding back a little bit and, you know, until we knew more about the budget. So we're in that process and how we fill the gap. I, you know, I might be leaning more to, I don't know that you could have communications division with not very many people there to do the job. So I I probably I have to say, I know we're in a study session tonight, but I'm probably leaning more towards, we've got to do something. I know you had two of these four positions listed in item number two for tonight's meeting. You had already, I think, had begun the recruitment process. I would probably at this point, because we do know how we're going to fill the gap. I would probably be inclined to advocate for moving forward, at least on those two positions. And I don't know. I So I guess we would need a conversation amongst the colleagues here, my colleagues, what how people feel about that. But it seems like we've we had seven positions, we've narrowed it down to four. And right now, none of those are filled. So I am a little concerned. We don't have anybody in those positions right now. And I guess I would just like to know a little bit more from my colleagues, how they feel about it. And I don't know if this is the right time to do that or not. But I'd like to put that out there.
Let me go back to Counselor Demott to make sure we got his question answered.
Okay, cool.
Well, really, in this kind of, I mean, John's line of thinking kind of changes my question a little bit. My question was, which of these can we do without? And I guess that's kind of actually alluding to what John is is also our Counselor Volz is stating. It's like, what? What can we do with and what can we not do with? I think we may have a difference of opinion between Counselor Volz and I about about the, you know, what we need. And so I guess my question with that being said, with kind of what, because I do want us to cover the need, but my question, what the need is. And so I know that this was changed. You know, last year with the advent of the innovation and communications team. And, you know, we we changed it to try something different. You know, there's there's a discussion to be had, which I don't want to get into tonight about whether or not that's been effective. But really, if I think back to when I first got on council, we didn't have 13 communications people. So with that being said, with the restructure, if you match it up between where we were three years ago and in between now and when we decided to grow that team or the council majority did. You know, could couldn't we get by for one more year without adding these positions? And I think, you know, that's really the question that that I would like answered. And I think that that feeds into my opinion about what Counselor Volz is asking us to discuss. You know, because he, from what I'm taking from what you're saying, Counselor Volz, you're kind of saying, you know, I feel like we need this because of the list. But I see the holistic department and what we had three years ago that, you know, good, bad, and indifferent was doing that that job of communications as well as the, you know, the the council outreach piece. So I'm just curious what that looks like to push this off for a year with the the staff we have in place now.
Yep. Any other counselors have comments yet on this one? Now, I would take the council back. We are the ones who told the city management, we're not getting enough communication. We're not being proactive in what we're supposed to be doing. And we totally go staff up to fix that problem. Well, the proposed staffing level is much higher than these four indicate. There's still three, maybe four that are not going to be filled. So if we want people to be proactive, we want them to tackle problems and not wait to be reactive, then we have to make a choice. Staff it or don't ask them to do that. Because we can't have it both ways. We've got people doing double duty now as they've indicated. And they can't keep doing that. We've got a problem with a burnout when we get that. I think that comes down to, do you want a communications group? Do you want them handling the issues that are coming up and being responsive? Or do we want to leave it? If we want to leave it, then that that's all part of the problem. But then don't come back with the expectation that we're not meeting the needs of getting communications out to the city or to within the city. Mayor Pro Tim sites, you had a comment?
Yeah, and I think this goes just beyond, you know, our our review of how successful the communications department is. I think fundamentally, we have a responsibility to as city council and as an organization, to let our residents know what programs we have, what challenges we have, what is going on in the city, because that's ultimately who we work for. And so I will be quite honest, I was confused. I thought these were just new positions. I did not realize how short staffed our communications department was. So I thank you, Counselor Volz, for this line of questioning and kind of really illustrating for us how how difficult it is right now. And I would say at a time of a pandemic and a time of a financial crisis and at a time where we're having to make hard budget decisions, we probably need to up our ability to communicate with our with our general public, not diminish that. So I have changed my thought process. Counselor Demott, I was with you. I was wondering, hey, let's look in the budget. Can we do without this in the context? I did not realize how how deeply cut this department already was. So thank you for your conversation on it, but I am supportive along with Councilors.
Counselor Demott?
Just real quickly on that line, and I guess this is kind of the point I was getting to. And I still understand where you're both at. And I agree, it's important for people to know what's going on. But we do have some high caliber positions and communications that we didn't have before we restructured. So it's not like we we don't have a department. And that's my line of thinking is we have some high, you know, high powered positions that we didn't have before. And we lost some of the other positions for whatever reason. And so I just question whether or not having some of those higher level communications people in place, if now's the right time to replace these other ones. You know, so I'm still going to think through it. I'm not giving you for sure, but that's why I'm I'm critical of it. Poor Counselor Volz keeps getting put in the dark as he's trying to sustain power over there. But I appreciate the conversation.
It's energy conservation on the city council's part. We keep trying to keep
Way to save money. Counselor Volz. Save money. Exactly, Counselor DeBatt.
All right. Have we had sufficient conversation on this item? Because we have about 40 pages left to get through.
Yeah, I don't want to take any more time right now, but I do want us to begin thinking about that, moving in that direction. I would support that at this. But I think we need have a unanimous direction, a group of us kind of all of us to go in that direction. So I think maybe tonight just started the conversation. Thank you. I but I want to go back real quick, if I can, to to counsel or to Mayor Pro Tim sites point earlier. I so I I forget what number it was, but if we, I definitely absolutely support what she is asking for. And I think it's absolutely necessary. Our vision statements and how they interface with these budget items, I think we have to have that. And I know she had asked that. And I so I would strongly support moving in that direction. And I've said, thank you.
All right, I'm going to try to get back to where we were at. Give me a second to scroll through this. Okay, I think
Mr. Mayor, yeah. We're on item number seven, Mr. Mayor. It's Larry speaking. And I just want to make sure that Mr. Andrews, if he had any closing comments on communications or any other next steps, if Mr. Andrews might have that, or we would be at number number seven.
I think the comments that have been provided and right now, I'd say this stays on the budget the way it's proposed. We're not getting enough saying that they want to yank it. So for right now, your your piece is still in until we get to the final budget. All right, let's move on to item number seven. And again, this is a question you specifically asked, and you're not satisfied with the answer. Raise your hand. Counselor Demott?
I'm sorry, I actually, we grazed past five. And I just want to make a quick comment on that one, because I don't think we need to get hung up on it. But I did read the feedback and I appreciate the feedback on the meta gap. And I do think that we need to continue that conversation, maybe not this year, because I know other municipalities are looking at doing it. And so if that goes forward and other municipalities to stay competitive with market, we are going to have to look at that, in my opinion. So I just wanted to make that comment. And we can bring that back at a later time, but I understand not putting it in right now.
Thank you, sir. Again, we're on number seven. Counselor Scully. All right, number man, sorry. Trying to jump back between fourth between documents. I missed you. Do you have a question or are you okay?
I'm okay, sir. I just wanted to support what Counselor Volz had said about the communication team and what Counselor Slides had said, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim sites had said about aligning with our strategic plan. I think that that's a strength we've had in the past. And and I feel like we're kind of moving a little bit away from it. We need to come back to it, always looking to our vision statements and our strategic plans as our guides of where we are going as a city. That is based off of surveys that we take with our residents and that we give guidance to our staff as a council. So I just wanted to reinforce what she said. That's all I had to say. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I don't have any idea in the world who number eight is from. But I'll make a wild guess. It's probably Counselor Seymour. No? Okay. Counselor Demott, there's a pages of information on this particular question. Did Counselor Demott, there's a pages of information on this particular question. Did you get the answers that you were seeking?
Almost. So I, I applaud and thank you for the information, but the IT nerd in me can't help it. What, can you guys tell me what brand? I was trying to actually look on this hardware and look at normal life expectancy. And I was not able to find who the manufacturer of, of this equipment is.
Thank you, Counselor Demott. I'd like to invite the city's Director of Information Technology, Emily Littlejohn, if she might, uh, know the name of that manufacturer or one of her staff members who's also on the line, uh, might, uh, have that available. Ms. Littlejohn?
Thank you, Counselor. It's a great question, and I would be happy to ask Phil Shires, our IT Systems Manager, to respond as he is the staff member closest to this project. Phil?
All right. Good evening, Counselor Demott. Uh, these are Dell Compellent Series.
Okay. And, and so the ones that are going to get moved off to be backup storage if this is approved, if they're not able to be, um, warranted, is that going to be an additional risk for us in some, some fashion?
Uh, so what happens is the primary site has a current environment that is a mixed age, so both four-year and currently eight-year. The four-year equipment will be moved down to the DR site, uh, where we change it to a time and materials warranty. We are responsible for all hardware failures that we have to purchase. But we do get, uh, support and firmware upgrades when needed.
Okay. And then my, my last question, the, there was part of, part of what was stated in here was, um, additional need for, for storage. And so it's twenty drives. I don't believe we saw how big those drives were. I'm curious, what's, what's driving the, the need for such, um, drastic change in storage next year? Or is it really that drastic? Maybe these aren't that big a drives, but it seems like, um, if you're going to fill those cabinets to meet a need, and that's part of, you know, you don't want to spend that on aged equipment, you'd rather move to new equipment that you're going to have to replace no matter what. What, what's driving that additional storage?
Yeah. So in there, they're not big drives because it is an old enclosure. So we can't get the, the newest technology with very large drives. Uh, as well as in the production environment in City Hall, they, we do have trays, they're already at eight years. So we need to replace those uh, spinning hard drives with SSD so that they can become back under our twenty-four, seven, uh, by four-hour response maintenance that we have with Dell. So we are losing the higher capacity, older drives. And in order to meet the storage needs of our current environment and growth in GIS, uh, in some of our backup solutions, uh, Laserfish is growing incredibly, at, at an incredible rate right now. We need to be able to have, uh, replacement drives.
Okay. And so really the bottom line of this is the reason we don't want to push this off a year is the cost to, to do that actually is so substantial, there's not much offset with the new purchase.
Yeah, correct. If, if you look at the one-year cost to extend the current life of this, of the current sand to meet the needs of twenty-twenty-one is more expensive than the first year cost of the replacement device. Uh, and we are would not be taking advantage of newer technology with increased performance, uh, newer backup solutions and a much smaller footprint, which will actually use less power and cooling.
Okay. Well, I appreciate such thorough information on this. Um, you call it just, you know, IT nerds. I gotta know the details. I can't help myself. So I appreciate that, and that, that's good explanations, and I understand your guys' position on it.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number nine, Seventy Second Avenue Water Replacement. Moving to item ten, Rodeo Market. Counselor Volz?
Just real quick, can I just ask just a, a kind of a detail type of question? If, well, first of all, let me ask, and another question occurred to me before I asked that other question. When we did the Harris Park plan and all those community meetings, do people support the rodeo? Is this something the neighborhood wants?
Counselor Volz, thank you.
Being, becoming a tavern or a pub, you know, a brewpub.
Thank you, Counselor Volz. Larry Dorr speaking. Uh, under item ten here regarding Rodeo Market, our Economic Development Department has written this, uh, report and background status and, uh, all matters related to it. And, and it might, it might benefit the audience for a short context on the question and so forth, but, um, Deputy Manager Andrews and, uh, his, uh, team, I think that would include Stephanie Trawler, will, uh, be able to answer some questions. Mr. Andrews, did you want to make an introduction, sir?
Yes, thanks, uh, Mr. Dorr, and I thank you, Counselor Volz, for the question. Um, I'm going to ask Stephanie Trawler to join us and provide, uh, very brief, uh, high-level summary of this project, and then answer Counselor Volz's question directly regarding, um, our best gauge of the community, uh, feedback that we've received so far on this, if that would, if that would answer Counselor Volz's question. So Stephanie, are you able to, um, join us here, please?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Andrews. Uh, Counselor Volz, Mayor, nice, Council, nice to see you this evening. Um, to answer your question, uh, Counselor Volz, uh, informally, yes, the community does support this project. We've heard, um, informal conversations and through the Harris Park planning efforts that they, uh, largely support this. I think where some of the conflict comes from is the coffee uh, component that they, the coffee bar that they wanted to put in as well.
So then my next question then would be if the community doesn't want it, if it's demonstrated that it just, it's controversial and the community doesn't want it there, that's a large investment we're making, that eight hundred thousand or nine hundred thousand dollars. Is that money transferable to, say, if we took that investment with a developer and did a similar project, say, around the Train Depot or, or, you know, RTD Station, the Beeline Train Station? Or is it because it's CDBG money, it needs to stay there? Or be repaid or other loopholes?
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Volz. And if it's okay with Deputy Andrews, I'll take this question as well. So, uh, the project is still viable. I spoke to the, um, to the developers. Obviously, we have to await and see um, the, the impacts to the restaurant industry from COVID nineteen. And if the project were to not, uh, move forward for whatever reasons, there is still significant deferred maintenance that's needed on the property. Um, one of the major critiques we hear from the community is that we have not been a good community partner with some of our, our properties along seventy, seventy-third. Um, and the, you know, since we do still have an active partner, um, finding another partner, um, we, and we also have a, a lease in place with this partner. So before we decided to move on from the project, it would need a thorough, I think, legal review um, before we cancel that, that contract obligations.
Okay. Thank you. I was just curious, uh, the fungibility of this project and it's a really large investment we're proposing to make there. And I know I've heard some real criticisms, so I, I just wanted to know what the, what the options are. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Mayor Pro Tim Sykes, you're up next. And then, uh, Counselor Smith, you're up after the mayor Pro Two.
Yeah, so, um, I, I, I want to thank, um, Ms. Troller. She answered kind of what I was going to say. My understanding, as the owner of this property, there is a lot of deferred maintenance, which it is not great. Um, I think that we have a certain obligation as a property owner to maintain our facilities. And then um, that allows us some level of nimbleness when, when there's a, a potential tenant that has a public value for the community. So, um, I actually kind of was opposite line of questioning with Counselor Volz in, um, should we even, even with some level of uncertainty with the tenant, should we, um, invest in this portion of town in a property that we own to allow for the likelihood of this tenant or, or a future tenant um, to be able to activate that site and use that city asset for its highest and best purpose? So I kind of want to understand the, the, the recommendation of not investing that four hundred thousand. Is that because that is so specific to this contemplated use?
Um, Mayor Pro Tim Sykes, I think the reason why we didn't recommend, staff did not recommend, uh, the additional four hundred thousand was certainly, um, in light of budget constraints. Um, the project, even without that current funding, we could go back and look at some opportunities for value engineering to see if we can get some costs down. Um, and, and, you know, other opportunities of redesign and that sort of thing. Um, so that's where it is right now. Again, you know, it's, it would be the council's purview if they wanted to renegotiate the co, the lease or decide what to do with the funding.
And Stephanie, this is Chris Lindsay. If I could add, there is eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars still within this capital project that was appropriated in previous years. And while that is frozen, um, that money, um, if not de-appropriated to balance, um, in some future action, which I don't, um, I don't know that I anticipate right now, would be available for, um, deferred maintenance on the building.
With that, uh, so let me clear that up because I do think I misunderstood here. With that frozen, I thought that that did not contemplate it being used in the twenty-twenty-one year, but you're saying it could be used or will be used for deferred maintenance in that year?
We are evaluating the frozen projects on a month-by-month basis as the, uh, as the revenue, uh, as we see revenue collections with the monthly financial report and the, the sales and use tax collections.
I see, I see. Okay, um, you know, part of my, and, and that does help. Um, part of my concern is we just, I mean, even seen in the staff report, uh, the price increases from twenty-eighteen to today, you know, I just feel like oftentimes when we defer maintenance, it gets more expensive. Um, and, but, but I appreciate what you're saying and understand it a little better now.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think my questions have been answered.
Okay. Other members of the council have questions? Mr. Dorr or Mr. Lindsay or Ms. Troller, can any of you give me an approximate value of the building as it sits today?
I can give you the value of when we purchased it and the, the approximate appraisal of the, of the land is just around five hundred thousand dollars. That is dated and information though, sir.
All right. So you've got a facility as it stands today, and I'm just using as examples, that has a value of about five hundred thousand dollars. And we're looking at investing in just to fix up that building, almost nine hundred thousand dollars. I'm not seeing a good trade value here. And as I said, when we talked about this the last time, the impression I've had from the comments I've heard from the people down there, this is not what they really want. They've been, uh, very vocal at some of the board and commission meetings, are not liking what was being proposed, regardless of where there's a competition issue between one business or another. I am still of the opinion, this is not a good investment at this time for this amount of money into a facility that really doesn't have a large amount of backing in the neighborhood. Nor has the potential of being a viable business in today's market with what's be currently being proposed down there. Even if the restaurant owner is willing to proceed with a restaurant in that area, the viability of his potential for long-term and having a higher customer base ratio is at the other location that we talked about the last time, that being the Westminster Station. Cause the customer base is certainly more advantageous to him there than where he would be up on seventy-third. So I, I'm still not convinced that this is a good investment. Those are my comments. All right, moving on. Get to the next one. The next one's, uh, item eleven on page nineteen. This is the, let me clarify that we are talking about the same piece. One, there was, at the last one, we talked about renovating the existing MAC facility as we know it today. And, excuse me, then the other one was the addition of the new part of that building coming to us from Highland Hills. So am I correct that this item is only dealing with the existing MAC facilities for the upgrade? And that's the other piece is not any longer being contemplated for the time being?
Thank you, Mayor. It's, uh, Larry Dorr speaking. I'd like to, uh, invite Director Jason Gang to perhaps provide a little bit of context on this subject and answer your question, sir. Mr. Gang?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you, Larry. Appreciate it. And Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, the initial phase of the renovation of the MAC, uh, would be to work hand-in-hand in, with Highland Hills in being prepared for their move out of the facility. Highland Hills is taking their gymnastics operation out of that facility to a different facility due to the growing needs of that program. So this, this particular budget request in the capital program is to keep pace with that change and, uh, essentially begins, uh, to integrate, uh, those what are considered two separate facilities really into one multi-use facility, Mr. Mayor. So it's, it's actually, uh, moving forward the renovations considering the, uh, the future steps.
All right. So Mr. Jean, the question before was, correct me if I have the numbers wrong, but was a hundred and twenty-five thousand for renovation of the back and another two hundred and fifty thousand for the additional space being vacated by Highland Hills? Is that number still correct?
Yes, mister. Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And I would ask, uh, Chris Lindsay perhaps to, to just to bring up and just triple check those numbers, but I'm, I, we, we have our ongoing and standard maintenance, uh, renovation and, and maintenance, uh, uh, endeavors that we need to complete annually in our facilities. Uh, the, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar figure is the one specifically that takes into consideration what is outlined in question number eleven with, with a response given there. The other amount is for, uh, a typical, uh, standard ongoing maintenance and repair needs of that MAC facility that we already operate today.
So this is, the part that's presented tonight is strictly the two fifty that was discussed the last time.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that was the follow-up question that was asked. Uh, yes, correct. Chris, do you mind, uh, Chris Lindsay, do you mind clarifying? I believe that's where question eleven came from, from the council retreat.
That's correct.
So, Mr. Lindsay, what happened to the hundred and twenty-five that was a part of that same conversation?
All right. Now, now I, now I follow your question. So the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is, um, projected expenditure savings due to operational changes. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a capital investment in the facility.
All right, I'm trying to figure it out because that's not what I understood from the last one, but I'm going to go to, uh, Counselor Scully for a minute while I think about it.
So I, I guess I'm looking at this and I'm thinking to myself, I, I get that we need to do maintenance and that we need to do upgrades. I, I love the idea of what we're proposing, putting there in place of the gymnastics. But I'm wondering if this is the year to do it. If, could we hold off a year? Would that be an option? Um, it just seems like an easy place maybe to save some money that wouldn't be harmful. Um, and we know that we would have this back in our budget in coming years, but while we have a, a declining revenue base um, temporarily, maybe this is something we should put on hold.
Thank you, Counselor Scully. It's Jason Gang, Parks, Recreation and Libraries Director. Staff is happy to do whatever the direction council would like us to pursue. I would just bring your attention and part of the, the, the response and, and the question was, what we're trying to achieve is keeping pace at a, at the minimal investment that staff recommends. Uh, what, what we're trying to avoid is, uh, half the facility being vacant for a substantial period of time, uh, and not being utilized. Uh, and, and also considering unfortunately, MAC general attendance of the MAC facility that the city operates is, has been an ongoing decline. So we have a number of partners that are willing to step in and fund these capital improvements, uh, ongoing Westminster Public Schools comes to mind. So we have a number of partners that are willing to step in and fund these capital improvements, uh, ongoing Westminster Public Schools comes to mind. Um, a host of Highland Hills, uh, Park Recreation District and other partners. All that being said, we absolutely can wait, Counselor. Uh, the trade-off, however, I just wanted to make you aware of is that we are trying to keep pace with these renovations and reinvesting in facilities that we, we already, we already operate.
And, and I appreciate that, Mister Gang, and I, I love that we have partners interested in, um, partnering and investing with us. Do you think that those partners will still be willing to invest with us if we were to say we're going to put this on hold for a year? I, I'm looking at the, the, the seniors that use the facility. Um, they're the high risk group. They're probably not out as much. Um, probably not you thinking of utilizing this, this particular rec center. Um, this particular, um, city facility. Um, as much, you know, it, it might be a good place to put a hold. And so I'm just wondering, would, would Westminster Public Schools? I know that they're very interested in this and, and I'm so excited that they want to partner with us in this. Cause I, I honestly think this is such a great idea, this theater going into this area. It's just so cool. I'm, I'm really excited about it. But. I'm also looking at, is this one of those logical projects that maybe if we could keep our, um, partners interested with us, we could say, let's put this one on hold for a year.
Yes, great, great input, Counselor Scully and, and Jason Gang, Director of Parks Recreation, Libraries. And I'll just respond, you know, I, I, I'm guessing probably. Yes, when it comes to Westminster Public Schools and I could, you know, take those additional steps and what, what their initial discussion is to helping, uh, with, with actually on the operating side. An ongoing commitment and operations to a fund a position such as a technical director to do an apprenticeship program with high school students. And so I, I would, I would hope and, you know, that that, that opportunity would still be there given some time. You know, the reality is, is that by the time, uh, all the renovations and whatnot, you know, you know, gets completed, you're still talking about not through twenty or one, you're talking about twenty-two. So the project would push it back to twenty-three really if, if we consider that. And I just wanted to clarify one more thing. Uh, maybe just two brief things. One is that this, this is not, um, going into the areas that our seniors, uh, and our patrons at the MAC are currently using. This is very much, uh, as the gymnastics facility gets vacated, beginning to work on that to integrate into one multi-use facility. Currently, the MAC facility as presented in the budget, uh, is to continue, uh, to support growing home and food insecurity operations. Uh, in the city and we just received a, a formal continuation request as staff had anticipated. To continue to use the MAC facility for food insecurity up to at least May. Uh, and that's what we're representing in a MAC facility as far as that ongoing closure. Uh, so hopefully that helps a little bit more beyond Westminster Public Schools. We would have to go back to our various theater groups that are interested in relocating out of their existing cities. To come into Westminster. Granted, I think everyone at this point in time understands with COVID impacts, um, there's plenty of challenges, yet people are looking for answers.
Yes, okay. Very nice job. Thank you.
And Mister Gang and Counselor Scully, if I could also add in, this is Chris Lindsay again. Um, again, this is a parks project that's funded by a restricted revenue stream. Um, so it's not, it's not one that, um, freed up would relieve a general fund pressure.
That actually is really helpful. Thank you.
Mayor Proton. You have a question or comment?
Mister Lindsay just asked, answered my question. I was going to ask, were these also restricted funds strictly for parks and recs use? Um, I would say I'm generally, um, supportive of this. Again, investing, um, in, in. Historic Westminster, I think is great. I think the, we've been asking and we've had in our strategic plan, um, wanting to enhance cultural offerings, um, and kind of regional collaboration. And I really have to say thank you to the staff report to connecting it to our policy directives. I really appreciated how this one was answered, um, and connected it to that policy portion that councils, that's our, our role. So thank you.
All right, moving on to item twelve. This is, uh, page twenty-one. Moving on to item thirteen. Page twenty-two. Counselor Volz.
That's really more of a comment. I, I think, um. On this one, you know, the fact that we're going to have at least one of our libraries open seven days a week somewhere. So I guess one will close on Monday, one on Tuesday. That will leave that access to people who need those services that, you know, whether it's tax forms or. Coming in and reading the newspaper because it's something they can't afford any longer or using a computer and printing their resume, all of those things that our libraries do for people. I, I, I really like what was written here and I thank you for working on that, making that clear. I just think our libraries are a great source and a great leveling of, you know, if someone doesn't have the money to buy a computer or maybe a printer and have in their home. And they could go to the library and, and log on. So I thank you for this and I appreciate the work on this. I just wanted to commend you for, uh. This write-up and, and your work on this. Thank you.
All right, moving on, item fourteen. Mayor Proton.
Uh, thank you. Um. It was an interesting answer to this question because I was concerned about the digital divide. And so a lot of people use our, um. Our libraries for internet access. Um, and so the, the response really talked a lot about our digital collection. Which if you don't have access to the internet, i- it didn't really address my concern about the digital divide. And so I wanted to ask. Understanding right now with so many schools being hybrid or online and there being an access issue, not everybody has access to high-speed internet. Um, how was, how are we leveraging our libraries to, to meet that need? And so I guess I was hoping for more like. Hotspots that you can check out or wifi in the parking lot. And while it did say IT was looking at some of that, I, I. I'd like to get a little bit more of an answer to this question. How are we, how are we going to be addressing community need for high-speed internet? Um, particularly, while I agree that, um, with Counselor Volz, it's great that we'll have at seven days a week, you can go to a library. But a lot of the same people who don't have access to the internet transportation might be difficult. And if you're trying to get your homework done, um, it might be an impact. So I'm just kind of curious if we have thought of some ways to extend internet access.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Jason Gang, Director of Parks Recreation and Libraries. I appreciate that opportunity and the apologies. We could have done a little sharper job as far as getting that access into people's hands and homes and in locations. And what we did talk about is that, you know, while it is absolutely most unfortunate to, to restrict libraries hours and reduce those. We, we want to look sort of, you know, the libraries without walls is what, what we talk about. And, you know, unfortunately, the library hours themselves, uh, doesn't. You know, does absolutely provides, uh, additional hours, of course, inside the library's access to technology, uh, and online use. But there still is quite a bit of challenge throughout the community, which was identified in our library's master plan, uh, in pockets and areas, uh, in the city that folks don't have access to the library. Uh, so what staff is, uh, pursuing is a mobile, uh, library, technology lab. Uh, funded by the CARES, uh, funds and supported by council. We appreciate that. Uh, and beginning as early as quarter one of next year. And the, the, the proposed budget does support this, to be clear, does support moving forward with the operating side of it. We'll be bringing technology into neighborhoods, uh, adjacent to schools and parks, uh, and areas that currently don't, don't, may not have that access. So that would include the mobile, uh, wifi, the mobile hotspots, if you will. It'll also include iPads and laptops and printers and stations. It'll also include staffing for technology needs. So one of the things, you know, in rethinking our service delivery is how do we get to those pockets of the community that don't have any access? And that was absolutely one of the staff's solutions. Um, beyond that, however, uh, Mayor Proton, we all, this, this also came up with the Parks Recreation Libraries Open Space Advisory Board. In their feedback on libraries and operations. And, and there was also a request for staff, uh, to look at things differently as far as access in parks. Access outside of facilities. And, and I appreciate all the work that the IT has done to help us. And of course, we want to grow that more. And in fact, some libraries are checking out mobile, um, wifi hotspots. And that's something at some point in time, we would also like to pursue. And, uh, yeah, so hopefully I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
So my goal in asking the question was to try to empower ways to allow people to help facilitate internet access and conquer that digital divide. So those types of mobile hotspots that you can check out at the library are exactly the type of thing that I know other communities do. Whether it's Seattle or Denver, oftentimes, um, working out an agreement with, you know, Comcast or CenturyLink to have them support that and help pay for it. And so, um, really was trying to give that policy, um. I guess indicator that I, I, I do hope that we continue to see our libraries, um, as, as a gateway for, you know, equity and opportunity. Um, whether that's educational or economic. So that, that was where I was coming from with that, just to be a little more clear. So thank you.
All right, moving to.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
Yep. All right.
I, I apologize, Mayor. I didn't mean, uh, cut you, cut you off. I just want to state that in fact, we are in the process of, of getting those hotspots and some of that will start in the near.
Okay, thank you, Mister K. Moving on to page twenty-five, item fifteen. Is there any other questions there? Counselor Volz.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I just wanted to ask a quick question. We have here that, uh. Potential recall election will likely cost our city two hundred thousand dollars. Um, was that seven thousand five hundred extra dollars, uh, we were talking about earlier today? Is that included in this amount?
Thank you, Counselor Volz. I'd, I'd like to invite, um, City Clerk Michelle Parker, uh, just to make it perfectly clear what, uh, this amount refers to. Ms. Parker?
Right. Thank you, Mister Door. That does not include a potential, um. Process regarding recall petitions. That's a completely different set of expenses and operations.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just want to confirm that. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, uh, Clerk Parker.
Excuse me. All right, moving on to page twenty-six, item sixteen.
Wait, Mister Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. Um, so this is just the recall, but then we also have another election at the end of next year. And that is already included in our budget, correct?
This is Chris Lindsay again. That is correct. We have included the, uh, cost of the, um. Council election to take place in November of twenty twenty-one.
And do we know what that cost is?
If you will, give me one.
Sorry, kind of caught you on the spot. I didn't mean to. It, it triggered this question out of my mind.
Sixty thousand dollars.
Sixty thousand dollars. Okay. And this one is two hundred thousand because this is, we cannot use the, the county resources on our own. We'll have to provide this one by ourselves, correct?
For that question, I'm going to have to let Michelle jump in and, and, uh, explain.
Sure, no problem. Uh, absolutely. Great question, Counselor Scully. And that is, that is correct. We would anticipate. Just based on the timing and it's impossible at this point to try and predict what the election date would be. But do you want to let you know that once we receive any kind of petitions and let's, just for the sake of this, um, conversation, say that they are sufficient. And we are, um, required to move to a special election. We would have to have that election. Um, no sooner than forty-five days from that date and no later than sixty days from that date, and it would have to be on a Tuesday. Um. Being that we are this close to the November presidential election. Um, a couple of things come into play here. First and foremost, the county clerk, um, of Jefferson County has, uh, or rather his elections division. Um, director has indicated to me that at this time, they wouldn't be willing to commit to assisting in, um, administering this election for us for multiple reasons. Number one, there is an actual lockout of certain systems, um, while elections are being finalized and certified. And as you know, especially here in Colorado, election day is not necessarily over on election night. Continued counting of mail ballots continues for some time. You also have a period of time in which military ballots are coming in and allowed to be counted. So based on all of their dates and certification for, um, the statewide secretary of state, um, results. They would be unable, most likely, depending on what the exact date is, of course, that these petitions are considered sufficient, um, to assist us. And so, yes, we would, at that point, be responsible for printing ballots, uh, renting out from a vendor an election system. Um, programming that ballot, um, getting all of our, uh, ballots back to ourselves. We would have to go into IGAs with, um, ballot drop boxes in the city of Westminster from both Adams and Jefferson. And there's a very long list of other expenses. And one of those that would probably be, um, pretty large would be some of the costs that we would have to incur modifying some of our facilities. The most important part about running your own election, of course, is ensuring, um, the chain of command for your ballot. From the minute it is printed to the minute that it has been accepted and counted, um, by your jurisdiction. That requires secure, um, rooms, uh, locks, cameras, all kinds of modifications potentially that we would have to undertake in order to ensure, um, the integrity of that entire process.
Thank you. That was very detailed. I appreciate it. I know I kind of caught you on the spot tonight. Um, but I appreciate you being able to, um, provide us with that information.
Counselor Demont.
Thank you. Uh, thanks for the information on this. I guess one of the just takeaways that I would, um. Think would be good as we learn all these things like this year, we've had multiple conversations over ballot initiatives, uh, whether they're driven by council or driven by citizens. And I think that all these learnings and how our process works would be good for us to have on, you know, a section on, uh, president-driven ballot initiatives on our election page. I know, uh, Ms. Parker, that you've done a great amount of work in making that page be a lot more productive for people. Being records from prior elections to, you know, how things work. And, you know, this is unique in that this is really, these costs are driven by something residents are doing. So for residents to understand their options and process as well as, you know, what it's going to cost out of taxpayer dollars, I think is important. So I, I would encourage us to take some of these learnings and be able to list them out on our election page.
Thank you. That's a good, good suggestion. Thanks very much.
All right, moving on to page twenty-six, item sixteen.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Ms. Gully.
Um, this was my question and I just wanted to compliment, um, the staff. This was very well done. Um, it was very detailed and I appreciated the work. Thank you.
Moving on to item seventeen, page thirty. Item eighteen. Page thirty-one. Number nineteen, page thirty-two. I know when this one came up at the last meeting. I made a visit to the MSC Center. And found a sign that was posted there that all the, uh, containers were full. Asking people to go to another one, but yet if you looked on the signs of the bins, people were still dumping stuff even though the bins were all full. That still has to be cleaned up from that date. I'm sure it has been. So from the MSC, I went down to Station One where there's a much larger number of bins down there. And even though the bins were not all full, people were still dumping stuff on the outside of the bins. Instead of taking the time to put them in, and I looked at every bin that was down there and they all had some level of capacity in them. But yet we still saw people dumping stuff on the outsides. And this picture is, uh, that's contained in the packet shows you some of the stuff that's being left out there. That we're then having to have our city employees go clean up. Mayor Protem?
I believe Counselor Demont might be in the queue before me.
I thought we got his question.
Okay, so I know it's addressed later on in this, but without having an alternative available in real time, the reason these are full is because so many of our residents use them. And this really does become an equity issue for people who live in multifamily. Oftentimes, our own code prevents those multifamily developments from having recycle bins there. This was a big enough issue that we were looking at how to do a wholesale improvement for our city. And it feels pretty disingenuous and disappointing that we would remove recycle bins at this point. I think there's a lot of different ways that we could tweak and improve them, even having cameras set up or something there to kind of deter some of that poor behavior or fees or fines for people who litter and have it actively enforced. I think there's a lot of different ways that we can do this without taking away people's opportunity to be good stewards of the community. I will remind everybody that in our community surveys and information going into our strategic plan, we've seen that sustainability is important. I don't disagree that illegal dumping is a problem, but I don't think we throw the baby out with the bathwater on this one. So I know later in our proposal, they recommended keeping them and potentially transitioning. And I would prefer that approach to keeping them and then transitioning at a later date.
Counselor Demont?
I would like to just support what Mayor Protem said. I think that I really don't want to see this program go away if we need to adjust to deal with the current budget situation. But I think, you know, there's a ripple effect of us taking this away. I know, for example, my family, we do curbside recycling in our home. But we still utilize the city facility, mostly because we're trying to divert as much recyclables as possible. And so like most of the providers, like they only take your recycling once every two weeks. I can tell you that, you know, with four teenagers, that fills up quick. And so I think of how that's going to affect, you know, working-class families who have kids, who are trying to do their part to divert their recyclables. You know, this is who it's going to hit, is middle-class families. And I think that the, I am concerned about the fact of people using, misusing the bins. But I think that that's a problem that needs to be solved. That doing away with the program, you know, feeds into a different problem altogether. So they're not the same problem to me. So I would prefer us figure out how we can maintain this program, because I know a lot of families, that's how they're able to do, you know, divert their recyclables.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to support some way to work with this project. I think Mayor Protem sites put that very well. And, you know, we have used that at peak times also as a supplementary at the Westview Center. I would ask, though, that Counselor Demont stop recycling his teenagers. We've already had them. We don't want them.
Counselor Bowles?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the mayor makes a really good point that there are some areas that need to be fixed. So we do need to tweak the system, very much so. And I've heard that from staff, and I've heard that, I've had conversations with the mayor about that. I don't want to get rid of recycling, though. I think Mayor Protem sites really made an excellent point. Our community supports that. It's a great service. I absolutely support it. And Counselors Demont and Seymour have also supported it. So I just wanted, I guess, lend my name to strong support of recycling in our community. I know that we do have in our packet an alternative proposal for a year or two down the road. And I'm very excited to hear more about that. So, but I do support recycling, so thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. We've had at least one person who said that they need to get up and get out of the room for a minute for other reasons. I'm going to finish up item 20, and then we'll try to call a short break. Have any comments on item 20, page 33? Counselor Demont?
Do we have any sense of, like, compared to other municipalities, are we pretty off by not having this done already? I know, you know, with the state already have done doing this, you know, is this make us an outlier by the fact that we haven't made this change to this tax? Or is that pretty common that municipalities haven't done anything?
What we did do some research on that, and what we've responded here in the write-up is that the city of Aurora has done this just in the recent past, in December 2019. I think the state, as we wrote up here, had done this previously. And so, no, the city of Westminster would not be an outlier for not having done this, to answer your question. And also, if I may, Mayor and council members, we would want to, should this be your pleasure to delete this exemption, we would want to present an ordinance to you in the very near future so that it may be adopted. And do notice, sufficient notice could be given to Westminster businesses that are involved in selling cigarettes in the community so that they would have appropriate time to make adjustments and changes to their point-of-sale computers and machines and so forth, just as if this were approved by a vote of the people or some other change. So I would seek your consensus on this particular matter, as I think it would be an ordinance to come before you here at the end of October and in early November for adoption, so that sufficient notice could be given. So, Counselor Demont, no, this would not make Westminster an outlier for not having done this.
I guess one of my other thoughts is because, you know, this is really pushed, and we even had some citizen comment from a former council member about, you know, wanting to keep kids from, you know, participating in smoking. And I think that we all could agree that's a good thing for kids not to use tobacco products. However, I don't know that, you know, typical teenagers cost-conscious when it comes to this. They're just trying to get something they shouldn't have. But with that being said, I would be interested if we do this, and this could be a down-the-road thing. And I know we're trying to save money. But one of the things I've consistently heard about, like, around tobacco products is the way that it's controlled. And so, like, I think in the city of Westminster, for example, you know, we, on top of the state, doing checks on people who sell alcohol. The city also does that. So you get two people who check that. There is no kind of check for a city to do that. So, I mean, if you really want to look at driving down the use of tobacco to teenagers, you got to find the businesses who are selling them. Because, you know, I don't think that teenagers care that they're paying an extra 22 cents per pack. So if we're going to make extra money off of it, I'd like to see that we're actually going to put resources behind one of these causes that's stated on this memo to actually do something to keep kids from buying tobacco products. So it's my two cents.
In line with your comment, Counselor Demont, I think we also have to look to the state ballot that we have this year, because there is some additional tax being proposed on some of these and classifying of tobacco products. And I'm like you, I think this is one that we should bring forward. But I think we should wait until we see the results of the election in November, because that will probably add more pieces to this than just the cigarettes. Any other comments from council on whether or not this should be brought forward? Mayor Protem sites?
I just have a clarifying question for you, Mr. Mayor. Are you talking about vaping and all of that being included as well? Is that what's, is that what you're referencing?
Yeah, based upon the results of what comes out of the state elections, that may add more into this than just this, because we could pick up the other pieces to combine it as one ordinance and not have multiple ordinances. So my only recommendation is to bring it forward, but wait to see the results of the state election first.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to make sure I'm understanding just the line of discussion, and we'll just double-check for next steps. It could be that we could prepare an ordinance and have it available for councils to review and first reading and so forth in ahead of the statewide election. And the mayor is referring to Proposition EE. And we'll have more information for that at council, at an upcoming meeting of the city council, when we review all of the matters before the statewide voters. We'll have a little bit of information for that. But I do have a concern that we would make appropriate and sufficient notice to Westminster businesses to begin implementing the deletion of the cigarette tax. And I have to make sure that it's clear that's all that the city is doing. It is not imposing a new tax on other tobacco-type products. I just have to be very distinct in that. And of course, City Attorney Franco could provide more information. And perhaps we need to have that discussion in full view of Proposition EE to come. I think we have that scheduled for your next upcoming meeting, and we could do that at that time. But hopefully, this reference we've got here in number 20 is useful for our follow-up. And we could discuss this in further detail down the road, if that would be your pleasure.
That works for me. Is everybody else all right with that? Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to just say it's 9:20 for the purpose. Let's take 9:25 to get you about six minutes, grab a quick break, and then we'll come back. We're on a recess until 9:25.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Scully, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well, thank you, sir.
All right, Ms. Parker, you're still with us?
Yes, sir.
All right, just for the record, it's 9:25, and all council members are back. Starting back to where we left off, we're on page 34, item 21. Any comments or questions on this one? You know, page 35, 22. Counselor Smith, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I couldn't get to my keyboard fast enough. But just one question here. It seems like we're reducing one K-9. But have we done a cost-benefit analysis on what it would look like? Does a K-9 actually serve as, not necessarily as an expense, but could be served as like half a police officer, if that makes sense?
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Larry Dorr speaking, Deputy City Manager. I'd like to invite Police Chief Tim Carlson to make a few comments about this. And I think he'll provide some context to the narrative for the residents who might be listening. And also just respond to your question on cost-benefit. Chief Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. Good evening, Council. This is Tim Carlson, the Chief of Police. Counselor Smith, reference your question. I don't know that we've done a cost-benefit analysis. But what I can tell you is that we're not reducing an officer position. In other words, that particular officer will not be assigned to a K-9. They'll still be answering calls for service in a patrol capacity. So our ability to answer calls for service in that type of thing is not affected. What is affected is the specific ability of that K-9 team to provide that K-9 service. So I don't know that that's a cost-benefit analysis, but I don't know that we're losing a lot other than a very specific capability by not having that team. There's certainly less expense in not purchasing a K-9, not paying the handler overtime costs that come with it. And of course, all the assorted costs that come with keeping a K-9 healthy and safe. So. all the assorted costs that come with keeping a canine healthy and safe. So I couldn't answer your question on a cost benefit, but I don't believe we have a significant reduction in service capability.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, and I mean, I understand every every department had to look at at their budget and try to figure out where to save costs. So on this particular one, is this something that we will revisit after 2021? To see where, you know, what that looked like after 2021 and what those those workloads were to see if maybe once we're in a better position, whether or not we bring that that fifth canine unit back.
Good evening, Counselor Demont. Thank you for that. I think there's always the need to reevaluate our positions in the department, whether they're a specialty like this or in a broader sense with the number of officers we have and the services that we deliver. We certainly intend to keep a close eye on whether our canine capabilities have been met in the reduction of one team. One of the ways we're able to do that is to very simply find out how many times we're asking for outside assistance when we could have had a canine of our own under those circumstances. So the direct answer to your question is I think there's always the need to assess. And this is one we would probably do, but I I'm comfortable in saying that I believe our four remaining canine teams can handle our calls for service for the most part, but we will continue to assess going into next year.
Great. I would appreciate that. And, you know, and obviously, if you get mid midway through the year and it's looking like those, you know, that workload is off and we're asking for assistance too much that we would hear back from you. But I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Certainly.
Other comments? Seeing no one move on to item twenty three, page thirty six. Going on to the next item, twenty four, page thirty seven. Counselor Bowles?
This is a really great write up. That was detailed and I appreciate that. So thank you for that. My question is, do we have a program within this menu of items that relates to HOA? So our homos associations are giant holders of lots of green turf that they water a lot. Are we working with them? Or is there any kind of program that works with HOAs to do zero escaping or lead them to resources? And how do we go about that? Is that within this program at all? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bowles. Larry Dorr speaking. I'd like to invite Director of Public Works and Utilities Max Kirschbaum, if he could make a comment regarding number twenty four here in the turf buyback program. Mr. Kirschbaum?
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. While we have a lot of education programs and opportunities that we work or offer and can work with HOAs, our our participation programs are aimed at individual residents, not at the HOA level. The changes that are being made and are already allowable within landscape standards and guidance, though, does give HOAs considerable latitude. But at this point, I do not can't think of an example where we have offered one of these programs to an HOA. I don't know that there's a prohibition to that effect, though.
Does it seem like a good idea to go down that path? I mean, I guess my point would be HOAs use a lot of water. They have a lot of Kentucky bluegrass turf in big, large, open spaces that could be converted to something that doesn't need to be that. A lot of HOAs, I jog around the neighborhood and walk around it in around our communities and there's water running off of these properties. Is there a way to I mean, is there a way for the city to encourage that or have a program that would? I know we work with individual homeowners, but it seems like HOAs would be a quicker way to get more done in a quicker way. If just four or five HOAs did it, it would be way more than probably what we're doing in these programs as far as reducing water, reducing turf out there that needs to be watered so severely. So I guess what would what would I need to do to suggest something in that path at some point in the future?
Happy to take a look at it. I, like I said, I I don't know if there's a prohibition to it. I just know that we focused at the individual owner, not to the collective HOA at this point. Happy to take a look, further look at it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Gentlemen, if I might.
This guy Downing, I might jump in real quick for Counselor Bowles' question. Talking about perhaps future subdivisions, I think exactly what you're talking about will be addressed in our landscape code update. We will, we will be encouraging water conservation methods in our new landscaping code. Thank you.
Director Downing, thank you for that. That that actually makes me feel really good. I'm glad to hear that. So thank you.
Mr. Dorr, did you have a comment before I get to the other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Downing. I think that Director Gank has a comment regarding Open Space Advisory Board, perhaps related to Counselor Bowles' question. Mr. Gank?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Bowles, for that question. And very, very briefly, just want to make sure that council is aware. Parks, Recreation and Libraries Open Space Advisory Board very much provides a program that Counselor Bowles, I believe, was describing. And staff would be happy to come back with a description of what that is, but primarily the board decided to increase the prioritization on things like zero escaping and whatnot, and specifically for HOAs and community groups to do this type of work. And they have an annual grant program of up to $50,000 and they also look to match that. And in fact, this year, we were able to accomplish just those things. And staff could certainly come back later with an update as to what that is.
That would be great. Thanks, Director Gank. That would be wonderful. Thank you for that. And yeah, I would like to hear more about it if possible. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. So this was a question that I asked. And I'm a little, while I appreciate the write up, it actually doesn't talk about funding amounts for either the lawn removal service or the grass to garden in 2021. So is the grass to garden budgeted for 2021? And if so, how much is budgeted for it? And then is the lawn removal service, it says that they contemplate doing it in 2021. But we funded it last time through a grant. Do we know, is that a multi-year grant? Is it the same amount of money? Are we considering expanding it concerning community concerns over water prices? Those are questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum. Would you be able to address these questions or would you care to defer to Mr. Lindsay? Thank you.
We intend to fund these programs at least at the at the level for as they have been in 2020 and looking for ways to further expand them since at least one of them was a prototype program. Chris, do you do you have specific amounts? I do not have the the amounts in front of me.
Mayor Protem cites the the report that you're looking at references the the grant amounts for the lawn removal service, $10,000 to $20,000 range.
For 2020. And so I'm asking, was that a multi-year grant? And we know that we'll have it in 2021. Have we looked at using our own funding for anything? And then the next program, the grass to garden, does not mention any amount for if it will be going on in 2021.
Mr. Kirschbaum, if you could help me with the grant, I'm not sure if that's a multi-year grant or not.
I'll have to get the detail. I I believe that was a one time opportunity. I don't know that it continues. But those programs will continue in 2021. And as I said, we are looking for ways to expand the funding that's available across the board in those programs.
Okay, so from a policy level, which is why I asked the question when we had our budget retreat, I think it's really important. If we we've had water rate increases, we've seen a pushback from our community. Some people who have had landscapes that were more affordable for them to maintain in the past really having difficulty continuing to have that kind of pride of care for their landscape. And so this is a really great bridge to assist them. So I had asked the question wanting to give that policy direction that I'd like to see this expanded, at least maintained, but potentially expanded. So I would like to know if someone can get back to me how much we spent on grass to garden in in 2020, or if perhaps that was a grant as well. And and if in if we are looking to expand those numbers, because it was sold out, but there was only 40 customers who could participate, and that's really small. You know, I know it was a dollar per square foot and they had to do a minimum of 200 square feet of removal of turf that the customer paid. So I guess I don't know how many people we served with the lawn removal service, but the fact that they were both oversold, I think indicates that there's a demand. And I just want to be recognizing these requests our residents are giving us to try to figure out how to meet their budget and still take care of their properties. So I feel like this is important to focus on.
Mayor Protem, thank you. We've worked, as you know, as everybody's seen these responses very thoroughly, but we need to add a little additional detail here. We'll do that. We'll have this as a takeaway and a follow up. So thank you. And we will continue to add a little bit more information here and perhaps some relevant proposal to the need that you described. So thank you for your patience. We will, we will take these away and respond. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a little troubled. Thank you.
Counselor Scully?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo what Mayor Protem sites and was saying here. You know, we have seen our community struggle with the increase in rates and and justifiably so. And so I I want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence to put programs into place that are going to help our residents redo their yards if they need to. And I've heard this over and over again from our residents. You know, if if only we had a program where they could assist me and we zero escaping my yard or redoing my yard so that I could conserve the water, I would appreciate it. So I want to see more programs like this, and I want to see expansions of this program, even in a time of a pandemic, maybe especially in a time of a pandemic when funds are short all the way around, including for our residents. So I want to make sure that our residents are having opportunity to access our grants and opportunities through our city and that we're giving them opportunity to learn more about how to responsibly and conservatively landscape their yards. Additionally, I just wanted to thank Director Gank for jumping in on the grants. I was like just jumping at the bit, you know, wanting to talk about those neighborhood grants and going, no, no, we just did that on the parks and rec boards. So I really appreciate you jumping in, Jason. Thank you so much.
Right, moving on to the next item, page thirty eight, item twenty five. Counselor Bowles?
Yeah, I'll be really very brief. I, this was my question, and it was a really big budget item or relatively large budget item. I was thinking more in terms when I asked the question of the enforcement side. And someone here did a really good job writing all the different aspects of maintenance and our two garages. And so I have no further questions. So if no one else does, I'm good. I'm good on this. Thank you.
Moving down to the next piece is the proposed operating hours of our rec centers for 2021. There are a number of pages of graphs here. And then we move on to page forty four, just a second, Counselor Smith, I'll come right back to you. And this group is the alternatives proposed to the questions that we had asked the previous week. We'll go back to Counselor Smith right now. Counselor Smith, you had a question or comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one of my comments and or I guess it's more of a question, but since we're reducing the number of hours for operations, does this then, I'm assuming, play into our reduction of seasonal, part time, full time of how many we're staffing for these operational hours? That question makes sense.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Smith. This is Larry Dorr speaking. I I can certainly answer that for our parks, recs and Recreation and Libraries team. They've taken considerable effort to match the resource of staffing at a couple of different levels to these proposed hours. And of course, those connect to the appropriations and the funds in the budget, in the various divisions and at the various locations. So short answer is yes. A longer answer I just described for you.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
All right, counsel, we're going to move on to page forty four of the forty seven. These are the alternatives that were proposed. Some of this has already been discussed as we went through the items. The recycling, the motorcycle patrol and noise analysis. And then that concludes the documents that were contained in the budget retreat follow up. Are there any other comments or questions on this item for tonight? Remember, we're still not done. Counselor Bowles?
Yeah, I'll be really brief. I just want to thank staff for their work on this. You know, we started out a budget retreat a few weekends ago and not know what we're getting into and the fill the gap process and the whole procedures we went through from staff helping us go through how we're going to fill the gap of $18 million for this year, I thought was phenomenal and I really appreciated it. And I do want to thank them for that portion of what they did for us in their work on this budget. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, before we close this item, is there any last minute comments from anybody on council in regards to any of the stuff you've seen covered tonight? Remembering we still have several more of these. Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too just wanted to thank the staff for all the work that they did. But I caution, I just, I know I brought this up during the budget committee meeting and I want to do it again. You know, we are not through COVID yet and we don't know what's coming. And so I just want to make sure that we we have kind of a list somewhere of things that we're going to be able to, if we have to quickly take things out or adjust again, that we have that that we're thinking about it. I want, I don't want us to get caught off guard a second time. You know, the best I want us to try and plan. And I know that our staff is very adept at that and I appreciate it. I think you guys did great work. I can't imagine how many hours must go into this. And then to answer all our questions and and the questions we throw at you in the middle of the meeting. And you always have answers and I really appreciate that work. But don't forget, we're not through COVID yet.
Yeah, I think Counselor Scully makes some very valid points, especially with what we're seeing in a large portion of our city with our infection rates right now. And the potential, let me emphasize potential, that this could get to be a bigger restriction than we're seeing today. And that could be, again, an impact to our business community as well. All right, if there are no other items, discussion on this tonight, this concludes all of the presentations and business of the community for a night. Mr. Frankel, I'll ask you to come back in. We have a, we recessed the executive section we were in last week. We'll need to rejoin that meeting. And if you would bring us back to that, then we'll reconfirm it when we get back in the executive section.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the executive session that's proposed to conclude tonight's meeting is to discuss a personnel matter, the city manager's performance evaluation pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code, Section 1113C1 in Colorado, revised statute 2464024F.
All right, for the record, I'm going to confirm with the council, they're prepared to go back into executive session. Remember, we were already there, and we recessed due to the lateness of the hour. I will ask each member to confirm they're ready to go back into it. And also, while we're still in public session, I do not anticipate that's going to be done within the next 40 minutes. At this point, I will ask, we also can confirm that we're prepared to extend that meeting to the time needed, and we will confirm when we're ready to come out of there as to how long that meeting ran. Mr. Frankel, any objections to the proposal?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, starting with council, I will try to poll each one of us, Mayor Protem sites.
Yes.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Bowles?
Yes.
Councilor Demont?
Yep.
Councilor Scully?
Yes.
And the mayor as well. Ladies and gentlemen, it's now 9:49, I know we've had a short break a few minutes ago, but to give us time to get out of here, get into an executive session and get in the other ones, I'm going to call, the meeting will start at 10:00 PM.
Okay.
At this time, we are adjourned.